And then it goes green. The Zoom.
Test, test.
All right, I want to call this meeting, the special meeting of the Newington Board of Education to Order. As you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll do the roll call.
Here. Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Beth Nike Hut Wagner.
Here.
Richard Laviere.
Present.
Amy Paradi.
Here.
Sam Sharma. Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Anastasia Yack.
Here.
We have everybody here except Mr. Sharma.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll also open it up for public participation. If you want to join us, you can come in through the Zoom or the telephone number in person is 860-665-8659. And we'll wait a few moments for that. All right, seeing that there were no participants in this, we're going to move on to item B, I see, which is all business, and there is none. And then we'll move to D, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Brummett.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. Tonight. Mike, so I'm pleased to have some of our administrators with us in person and some with us virtually due to a variety of reasons. And they are going to speak to you about their roles very briefly, as well as some of the key initiatives that they're in charge of in the district. And you're going to hear from all of our building principals, as well as Assistant Superintendent Steve Farisi. I'm going to start with him, and I'll introduce each group of folks as they come along. And then if folks are participating virtually, I will make sure they're on the screen so you can see them. But without further ado, I'd like to bring up Assistant Superintendent Steve Farisi, the Equity Inclusion Specialist, Dr. Gerald Hairston. And is Kim participating tonight, Steve?
Kim is participating virtually.
Virtually, so I will exit my screen so we can see Kim. All right, now I don't know how to go back to the meeting.
Still sharing.
Oh, stop sharing. There we go. So can we see Kim on the screen? I don't see her.
I don't know if you're going to, I don't know if you're going to be able to see me because I called in and I'm not, I don't have the video.
No, then I won't be able to see you. We'll hear your golden tones. All right, I'll kick it over to Mr. Farisi.
Well, thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Farisi. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and I'm fortunate enough to lead the Office of Human Capital Development. I am supported by some extremely talented people in that office, Kimberly Davis, who is on the call, our Director of Talent Management, God bless you, and Dr. Gerald Hairston, our Equity and Inclusion Specialist, as well as some very skillful administrative assistants, and then all of my colleagues at all of the schools and throughout Central Office. The focus of our office really is both people and systems. So people and systems that will support continuous growth and improvement throughout the organization based on our strategic improvement plan. And I know you have a copy of that in your packet, so that will be a good reference point, I think, for you all this evening, not just for some of the items that I'm going to share, but also with what some of the schools and some of the other offices among Central Office will be sharing. To accomplish this, we oversee in my office various functions, most importantly, the entire hiring process. So our goal is always to attract high-quality, highly diverse candidates into our workforce. So from advertising to recruiting, to onboarding and development, to evaluation, to even, you know, compensation packages for all of the staff that come on board, whether they be a part of one of our five unions that we manage, or whether they be hourly staff, we oversee all of that, and we work tirelessly to make sure that we put the very best people in front of our students each and every day. So whether that be our bus drivers, to our cafeteria workers, our custodians, to our teachers, to our leaders. And we work hard to do that. I also oversee and manage all labor relations from our office. So we do have, like I mentioned earlier, five unions, but we also have a lot of policies and procedures that do dictate and support how we manage all non-unionized employees. So that would be our hourly staff. I work closely with a subcommittee of this Board of Education to devise and create and review all policy that you'll see. So there is a Board of Education Policy Manual, and we work very closely to review current policies, make sure that they are updated, but also to look at our current practices and see if we might need policies that don't yet exist. So that way, we can do things with the utmost efficiency in our ability to meet our organizational goals. I work with all education offices and Town Hall in all seven schools to ensure a through line of coherence in all of the practices that we have in place, because it's critical that when we know we have certain practices that will help our organization to function efficiently and effectively, that all schools and departments are engaged in those practices, so that way we can maintain consistency of service. Interwoven into the fabric of all of these functions is our concerted effort to improve equity and inclusion within and among staff and systems. So to that end, I would like to introduce you to Dr. Gerald Hairston, our Equity and Inclusion Specialist.
Hello, how you doing? Should have wrote down some bullets like Stephen. He cheated. He told me it was brief. No, it's nice to meet everyone. So I think, within the work that Stephen described, there is a need for particular places where individuals can come together in small units and to support equity. So basically, what that's comprised of is small units of educators who would be defined as equity teams, one that sits at the district level, there are a few at the school level, and they help to reinforce and support what we term equity. But it's really all over the mission of Newington Public Schools, to make sure that each and all students get what they need in our school system. So the function of those teams is to really support that effort, to make sure that educators have what they need in terms of knowledge and capacity to really do that work. There's a slew of initiatives under that, but the initiatives are organized in the particular focus areas. So one of those areas is family and parental engagement. Another one is around literacy or cultural literacy, which is really around the books that we read as adults to understand the students that we work with across that each and all sort of idea. There are several other areas that I won't get into great detail about, but that's essentially what we look at, is just how things function as a capacity in pockets, and how we can make sure that people have what they need under each of those pockets to do the work that we call equity. So on the other side, and if you imagine just two sides of a dime, it's essentially the other side is just the administrative arm of support. So as much as we know that there's a classroom function, an extracurricular function, that's basically the charge of educators. What we also know is that the entire culture and infrastructure needs to be supported by leadership, so that we understand that the things that are done in the classroom are supported by the leaders of the building to make sure that those things are possible to not just initiate, but to sustain. And so we've organized the Equity Admin Council to help to make sure that leaders have what they need to create a culture of supports around, again, this mission of equity that we embarked upon as a district. So that group is comprised of some of the folks at the table, some of the folks on the call up there. And so some, but it is actually role diverse, both the district equity team and also the Equity Admin Council is role diverse so that we can sort of cover the spread of the agency. And I think the best kind of metaphor for the work is as a spine. We know that there are increments of work that have to happen across the district, but we know that those things have to happen in coherence. So just like the different area of the vertebrae, we want to be sort of facile in our movement. But to do that, we have to have infrastructure that's connected and focused in a particular area. So that's what we're focused on building this year is the spine of the equity work, to make sure that we can move, I said facile, but can kind of be understood as nimbly and with efficiency, a fully exercised body around our movement for equity. That's the way that we try to think about it.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston. It's actually Kim. Does she want to add anything to that from her remote telephone dial-in?
Honestly, my colleagues couldn't have said it better. I just would like to welcome all of the new and returning board members, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much, Kim. And actually, I just want to backpedal a little bit. I kind of jumped right in without giving any context at all. Tonight, what we hope to do is allow all of our new and returning board members to reorientate themselves to who our district leadership is and the roles that they take on, their primary roles. You're not going to hear all the details. But throughout the course of the rest of the school year, each of these individuals will be presenting to you in more depth about what they are working on, whether it's equity or our equity workforce efforts. You'll hear more about that in subsequent board meetings, and that would be true for those that you'll hear from momentarily. So tonight's a broad overview, and then we'll get more in-depth in a subsequent presentation. So I want to thank Steve and Dr. Hairston for joining us and the BR kickoff folks. And now I'd like to turn the mic over to Jay Salerno, our Director of Educational Technology.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. It's great to see some familiar faces and some new faces. Congratulations to all of you. My name is Jay Salerno. I'm the Director of Educational Technology. This is my 23rd year in the district. Now I'm going to start counting backwards. I only have 12 more to go. As the Director of Educational Technology, I came into this position in 2015, and those are the days we're thinking about going one-to-one. And bully has the pandemic changed everything, changed the face of the classroom, everything. So my primary responsibility from day one was to assist teachers with integration of technology and to find innovative ways that we can teach our children. And that hasn't changed at all these days. It's just actually exploded. The pandemic has opened on some new avenues. It's opened some opportunities for teachers that kind of were a little bit resistant to using the technology, and now they are. My other responsibility is to work with the Director of IT, Craig Holland and his staff, and make sure that all of our teachers and our students and all of our staff in the district are fully equipped with the latest and the greatest technology that we can provide. As far as the strategic improvement plan, I'm with Mr. Jacobowitz, and we're on Focus Area Four, the infrastructure and the facilities. So we control or we look for opportunities to make sure our facilities evolve and are adept to all the changes in our program of studies. The program of studies is continuously changing with great opportunities. And also, we have to make sure we're providing equitable opportunities with technology. So although my job has not really changed, it's just expanded, and I look forward to working with all of you over the next year.
Thank you very much, Jay. Appreciate that. And he, his team and Craig's team got us through the pandemic with flying colors. We really grew a lot as a district because of the work that they helped us to accomplish. Next up is our Director of Student Services, Marilena Giuliani. She's remote today.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the new board members, and welcome back to our previous board members. It is great to be here. It's great to be able to address you tonight and welcome you to our school year. We, I get to oversee all things special ed, and we have a phenomenal office. I have two assistant directors, Alex Hesslin and Claire Salerno, who are my right-hand at the school level, and we are, we get to oversee all students pre-K through age 22. And I think most of you have heard my mantra that our special education students are general education students first, but it is really our job to make sure that they get above and over so that they are able to achieve at the same level and at the same rate as their general ed counterparts. So we have multiple programs in the district. We welcome you to come visit our programs. We have students who participate in a cell-contained model if needed, but are fully integrated and mainstreamed as appropriate. So we continue to build our programs to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. One of the big initiatives that we are working on and continue to work on is social-emotional. We are very lucky to have effective school solutions in the district. We really focus in on students' ability to be able to function within the school, and we know when their social-emotional well-being is not 100% intact, that they have trouble accessing their academics. So our, one of our big focuses this year and in the past year has been on social-emotional well-being, and we will continue that focus.
Thank you very much, Marilena. And she didn't mention that recently she was asked to speak at a conference. Is that later this week, Marilena?
It is December 8th.
It's December 8th, because Newington has finally gotten far enough along on our pre-K programming to get off quote the bad list, and we are now considered a fully integrated pre-K, and Maryland's department has been integral in that work. So thank you very much. Our next speaker will be, and I believe it's going to be a tag-team effort, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Wendy Kraus and Director of Curriculum Instruction Kristen Freeman. I'll turn the mic over to you.
Yes, we are tag-teaming as we do 24/7. So in our office, we oversee everything related to curriculum instruction and assessment. So all the systems related to that, support for staff. And to give you a flavor of that, what we're going to do tonight is share some of our work for specifically this year, which is outlined on these very nice posters. We have one for each school. I happen to have the Anna Reynolds poster here tonight, and we're just going to kind of walk you through some of the work, and then the principals are going to piggyback on that.
Well, welcome, everybody, and welcome to the new board members. We knew that returning to school full-time, as we are still in the pandemic, but hopefully on the downside of it, that there was a sense of overwhelm for our students and especially for our teachers. So we did our best to be strategic in how we were going to address what we could already anticipate would be some learning loss as students returned full-time to us. So in doing that planning, we always think of first is the Newington Public Schools Portrait of a Graduate, and that was recently completed about six months ago. And that serves as our North Star or our lighthouse. That really is the promise that we make to all of our students, that through their education at Newington Public Schools, we promise that they can develop the skills that are outlined in that portrait. We know, though, that when we look at our student achievement data, that not all students are meeting those expectations. So we're not fulfilling that promise to all of our students, and specifically, even prior to the pandemic, there is an achievement gap between some of our, some of our students and when you look at our marginalized and underrepresented groups. So our focus is on closing that achievement gap, which has also unfortunately been exasperated by the pandemic.
So that right here on the posters, and you'll be seeing these, these are in every classroom across the district. What Kristen was describing is right here is our why, it's our student achievement goals, what do we want to see by the end of the year, and we've set benchmarks along the way of to monitor our progress. And then we have to think about, but what are we going to do to get to that why? And our what really focuses on two buckets. Marilena spoke to one of them on how we are supporting social-emotional learning, and the second is how we are addressing unfinished learning in the district. So we've set some priorities, and our instructional strategies are really focused on work related to prior knowledge, because that's such a key during this time. And then you'll see benchmarks related to that here. And then in order to get all that done is the how, and that's what moves over to this part of the poster. And what we're working on this year in our how to get all this done is really the work of what we call PLCs, or professional learning communities, and that is teams of teachers working together to make those collective decisions about what our students need at any given time, what resources will most help them, what needs to be the essential learning that we focus on, given, given some of the lack of instructional time that we've seen over the last two years. So when we put all this together, this is our, this really represents our collective work together, so we're moving in the same direction. Each school has their own poster because there's some slight differences, particularly by level. So now you're going to hear from the principals, and even though each building is a little unique, the work that you'll hear about really crosses across schools, but they're going to highlight a few different things so that you don't hear the same thing from each person.
Thank you, Wendy and Kristen. It's now my pleasure to introduce the Principal of Newington High School, Ms. Tara Tigno.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize. I think I thought I was going last, so I'm probably going to say, leave out a few things because my colleagues were going to say them prior to me, but welcome, everyone. It's nice to see you from afar, and someday it will be in person soon. So I always introduce myself as the proud Principal of Newington High School, because I am. I work with 1,300-plus students, over 150 staff members, and then three right-hand people, Mr. Ficocelli, Mr. Harris, and Mrs. Blanchard, who are our house principals at the high school. So you heard a little bit about SEL in the PLC work and equity work that we're doing throughout the district, and I know my colleagues will speak a little bit more to that, so I won't steal their thunder. So to not repeat that, I'm just going to highlight a couple of items that are unique to the high school. As Kristen said, we finalized the Newington Public Schools Portrait of a Graduate, which is our promise that we made to our students, that they will all be effective communicators, thinkers, and citizens. And we have made many efforts on our multiple pathways to achieve the standards of the Portrait of a Graduate. And we've added a couple of courses, our Black and Latino Studies course, our African-American literature course, and an online digital citizenship course. We also are looking to increase our ECE offerings in both physics and Spanish for this year. And we're looking into right now the possibility of also offering two college-level courses for aspiring educators, which we're really excited about, students who want to get into the field of education. This will be a new pathway for them as well. So we'll continue to offer courses, you know, to get as many students involved with many different careers that we can.
Thank you, Tara, and more to follow about those new courses. We just want to make sure everything's going to fall into place, but we're very, very excited about that. I would now like to introduce Mr., let's see, who's next, Mr. Dan Diaz, Principal of John Wallace Middle School.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see all of our returning board members and welcome our new board members. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you in partnership with our students and our school community, and we look forward to great things. Just wanted to sort of touch on a few things. So I've been in the district since 2006. This is my, going on my 16th year. I started as a social studies teacher at Newington High School, an assistant principal in the Stoddard House over there, and then also now as John Wallace Middle School Principal. So a few items just to really touch upon, a lot of what you heard from Stephen and Gerald and Wendy and Kristen, those overarching sort of larger themes that are happening in each school. So you heard about equitable instructional practices, you heard about, you know, instruction that targets the needed acceleration right now, since our students do have gaps in learning, you know, from the past year and a half, and of course, SEL. So, you know, what does that look like at the building level, kind of in a practical sense from a teacher lens? So one example I'll give you is, you know, what we've been really honing in on are tier-one instructional practices at the classroom level, that will, you know, not just remediate, but also accelerate learning. So one example I can share with you is we've really had a heightened focus on explicit vocabulary instruction this year. One in particular, one method in particular, a lot of our staff have been using a tip chart, which is really a strategy to sort of bring vocabulary to life. So rather than just defining a term and writing in a notebook that we've done in the past, it's a strategy where students actually would, you know, write a term down, come up with kind of their own definition of the term with the teacher and identifying it, and then put some sort of visual, some kind of mnemonic device, something for them to kind of remember that term. So it really brings that term much more to life and have a discussion on that. And our staff have actually been doing a great job. One example I'll give you is our entire sixth-grade team are using tip charts to front-load vocabulary, with the idea behind that being, you know, if you're exposing students, almost front-loading the information ahead of time, and having this running record of vocabulary, doing explicit instruction, when they do come across the content and that vocabulary term is in there, particularly if it's a central knowledge that they need, they've already been exposed to it, you know, and some of the research behind that, that we've been doing and seeing how we can accelerate learning in addition to some remediation needed. So that's just one example at the classroom level. As far as promoting equitable instructional practices, you heard Ms. Giuliani also speak about her special education programming. One thing we sort of took a look at is analyzing our systems, you know, as far as are we really delivering services in the most equitable way for all students. And one thing we decided to do, going on some research and some work we were doing with CIRC, is looking at how we schedule our case managers. In the past, at John Wallace, our case managers who serve as a special education student really were assigned to a grade level, so students would kind of filter in and out through four case managers throughout their time at John Wallace. And some of the research that we had come across and some of the work we were doing with CIRC showed that, you know, a different approach would be have that case manager stay with those students to really get to know them as learners, as individuals, really get to understand, you know, their IEP and make a connection with the family. So one thing we started doing this year, and so far, it's been successful, is we have looped our case managers. So what would happen if I was in fifth grade and I had a case manager, that case manager would then follow me into grade six. And the feedback from our case manager was very positive, and having a whole year knowing this student, making connection with the family, understanding their IEP goals, you know, understanding how they are as learners. So we're hoping to continue that. But that's kind of an example of what these kind of overarching, you know, themes that we're working on, what that looks like at the building level and the classroom level. So just two examples there to share with you. I look forward to, you know, meeting you all again in person at some point, and look forward to our continued work together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diaz. I would now like to introduce the Martin Kellogg Principal, Jason Lambert.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Lambert. I'm the Principal of Martin Kellogg Middle School, and I too want to extend your congratulations on your recent appointment, and we're looking forward to working with you. I'm joined by our Assistant Principal, Kevin Duran, and like other schools in Newington, we have quite a bit of exciting work gaining traction at Martin Kellogg in the areas of equity, unfinished learning, getting our students to think globally, professional learning communities, and social and emotional learning, as you'll probably hear when the elementary folks speak a little bit, SEL for short. Now all of these are inextricably connected, and they complement each other. So I'm going to speak briefly about our ongoing efforts to support the latter in the social and emotional learning. Prior to COVID, our staff completed a successful professional learning series on being trauma-informed, and this segued nicely. And this segued nicely into ruler training for the staff. And, and you'll hear a little bit more about what ruler entails, just a little bit from some of our elementary colleagues. Now, however, we are currently in the process of transferring this learning into our classrooms with our students. And for the most part, this work with students has taken place during our advisory period. And what we found that is missing are truly the everyday practices and routines that can proactively support students in accessing learning readiness. That is getting them to be focused, calm, engaged and attentive. You know, so we are looking to go deeper into certain aspects of social and emotional learning and really focus on daily routines that can shift students into a learning-ready state. And it also saves teaching time and increased time on task. Therefore, in order to better leverage this effort, we recently applied for and we were awarded a grant for Roots Education's Roots to Rise Program to deepen our work specifically around self-awareness, self-management, growth mindset and mind-body literacy. And this includes a whole staff professional learning set of sessions and small group coaching sessions. And ultimately, this would be the everyday living of social and emotional learning. And it'll, and our hope is that teachers would be equipped to facilitate everyday strategies into their core curriculum, not just having our advisory period sort of operate sort of in a silo. And this would include mindful movement and strategies to equip students to self-regulate and increase learning readiness states at any time of the day. This program would not replace what we're currently doing with Ruler or the bank of resources that we use during advisory. It comes from a program called Rethink Ed, but truly complement by both providing a how-to for the aspects of Ruler and coherence and routines using Rethink Ed. And while teachers are doing these practices with students, you know, they will embody the experience and internalize them for themselves, thereby enhancing their own social and emotional competencies. So utilizing the strategies, staff will be empowered to help foster the optimal environment for Martin Kellogg community as we continue to support a very slow but steady return to normal for our students. And, you know, I just want to say we look forward to working with you this year. And I'm happy to provide any information about Martin Kellogg or any of the goals or action steps we have in place. Don't ever hesitate to reach out to me and best of luck to a, to a good year and looking forward to a successful partnership.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lambert. And what he's referencing in the grant that was awarded is we allocated some of our Esser funds and allowed teachers and administrators to apply for grants based on innovative ideas. And one of the innovative ideas that came out of Martin Kellogg is that Roots to, is it Roots to River?
Roots to Rise.
Roots to Rise. And it's just was a nice compliment to our SEL work, so it was a perfect link to our strategic plan. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you so much. I'd now like to introduce our elementary principals, and I believe they're going to present in somewhat of a team format. So I'm going to introduce all four and then they're going to jump in in the order that they've already agreed to do. So first and foremost, I have Mr. Marciano from E-Green, Mike Gatos from Patterson, Jason Smith from Reynolds and Bev Lawrence from Ruth Chaffee. So I will turn it over to the elementary principal team.
Good evening. I'm going to go first. My name is Jim Marciano and I'm in my eighth year as the principal of Elizabeth Green. Board members, congratulations on your new or renewed seats on the Board of Education. I am supported in my school by an amazing staff and strong family partnerships to provide a better-than-Disneyworld-like environment to students. To create that environment, E-Green is in the second year of implementation of Ruler. Mr. Lambert was referencing that in his presentation a moment ago. It's a social emotional, social and emotional learning approach developed by Dr. Mark Brackett out of the Yale School for Emotional Intelligence. Ruler is an acronym for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing and regulating our emotions. We are teaching our students and educators to become emotional scientists. In year one of implementation, our staff was introduced to the approach through training and experiences. We use the tools in staff meetings and in professional learning environments. Ruler utilizes four main tools, the charter and agreed-upon set of feelings and behaviors, the mood meter, a way to check in on how we are feeling and what we can do to shift if needed, the meta-moment, learning to control the space and time between action, visualizing your best self and reaction. And finally, the blueprint, a conflict resolution protocol. This year and even a bit last year, we began introducing students to the tools and language of the approach. Our focus this year has been on establishing core routines within each and every classroom. Core routines include opportunities for students to utilize the tools in authentic circumstances. As part of a community circle, students might rate themselves on the mood meter, talk about strategies for shifting how they are feeling, discuss charter feelings and/or behaviors, visualize their best selves by setting a goal for the day, or practice some mindful breathing. With the successful implementation of these tools, strategies or skills, our school community has become better equipped to meet the challenges of teaching and learning. It has been essential navigating the educational landscape, certainly during a pandemic. That is what's happening at E-Green. I now pass it over to, I believe, Mr. Gatos.
Wow, Mr. Marciano, kind of tough to follow up the Disneyworld-like experience, but I will certainly do my best. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Gatos. I'm the building principal at Patterson. Hard to believe it's year nine for me, starting at Patterson, and prior to that, I was an assistant principal at the high school. Beyond having the privilege of leading Patterson, I'm also a Newington resident. Carrie and I have lived here for going on about twenty years now and we have three children in the schools. We have two at the high school level and one with Mr. Diaz over at John Wallace. And as, as parents, we cannot be more pleased with the, with the experience that our kids are getting within our school system. So I believe very deeply in what we do and I consider myself very privileged to be a part of our community as a whole. You'll hear a lot, I guess, a lot of similarities throughout the night. And this group has worked, I think, exceptionally hard to make a lot of cohesion in what we do. Although things may look different at the different levels, I think we work very hard to make sure we're all kind of rowing the ship in the same direction, working towards that Portrait of a Graduate. Because what we do at the elementary level certainly has building blocks to translate as our students move up to the middle level and then on up to the high school. Piggybacking off of Mr. Marciano, and this is not just specific to Patterson, I'm pretty confident that we are all focused on this as well. And for us, it's our early intervention process. We know the impact that, or at least we're figuring out the impact that the past twenty months has had on our kids. And we heard, you know, Mr. Farisi and Dr. Harrison and a lot of other staff on here talk about each and every child and really figuring out what those kids need to be successful. So a part of our early intervention process is we are constantly monitoring students day-to-day and their performance level, both socially and academically. And we're taking little benchmarks along the way, taking little temperature checks to see how they're doing and how they're performing. And we have an idea of how they should be progressing through the day and through the months as they go through school with us. And if for some reason they're not performing to expectation, it's our role to put tiered support in place to help them, you know, consistently and constantly grow through, throughout the year, hopefully towards grade level expectations. We started this with the way that all, all four elementary schools built our daily schedules this year. And each morning, there is time to teach and address social emotional learning. And there's adequate time throughout the day, not only just for teaching literacy and numeracy and writing and science and all those fun things, but to strategically address what learning gaps might be there. We built strategic time in our schedule for our interventionists to work with our classroom teachers and with our students and really target support where it's needed. And that is not set in stone support. We monitor every week how just about every child in our building is doing. And we really target support to where it's needed and when it's needed. So each week, we have a series of teams that look at how students are doing and we're monitoring, adjusting our instruction appropriately to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. In addition to meeting the needs of our struggling learners, we do have time built in our day to extend learning for our kids that do need enrichment and things like we have programs called Tech Experts, where we have some of our students that are very good with technology or helping out other students and supporting classroom teachers. We have students that are working on podcasts with various staff. So we are working very, very hard to meet the needs of every and all learner and learners in our building. And that is through a very strategic and thoughtful process to make sure that none of our kids are falling through, through the cracks and the gaps and making sure they get what they need to be successful throughout the year. I believe I am turning it over to Mr. Smith, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Mr. Gatos. Welcome to the returning board members and all to new board members. I'm Jason Smith, principal at Anna Reynolds Elementary School. This is my sixth year at Anna Reynolds and then eighth year in the district. I was the assistant principal at Martin Kellogg for two years prior to coming to Anna Reynolds. In addition to the things that my colleagues have spoken to you about, particularly Mr. Marciano and the work with Ruler and Mr. Gatos with the early intervention process and SRBI, we are also focusing a great deal of our attention on collaborative teaching at Anna Reynolds. That has been one of the priorities that we started just before the pandemic and then kind of got put on pause, but we've been revisiting it this year and spending time really exploring that further. And as Merrillena spoke about, really being able to support special education students as well as all students and their needs in the classroom and that regular education classroom environment. So what is collaborative teaching? It's really about two or more certified teachers, professionals that share their intellectual expertise and instructional and take on the instructional responsibility in a learning environment to produce positive student outcomes and teacher success. And one of the things as I talk about this with our teachers is that if you think about everyone is an expert and everyone has different areas of expertise and all students can really benefit from different people's areas of expertise. For example, classroom teachers are oftentimes curriculum and instruction, that tier-one level experts. But special education teacher is more of an expert in differentiation and helping students to access the curriculum. An ML, the multi-language teacher, is an expert in language acquisition. And so all students can really benefit from having those supports in the classroom. There's so many benefits from collaborative teaching, but really there are achievement gains for students and being able to access that tier-one curriculum in the classroom. And then there are tremendous benefits for teachers, being able to work collaboratively, integrate each other's skills. And the easiest way to learn is by seeing somebody doing it and being able to work together with their colleagues. And so it has had tremendous benefits. This year, we've gone a little bit deeper with it and spent some time exploring some of the different models, as well as some of the challenges. All of our teachers have time in their schedule that is kind of their collaborative planning time, when I developed schedules this summer, to really set that out so that it could be a priority. So even if it's thirty minutes a week, they have that time to collaboratively plan with a colleague. Our strategic planning committee is taking that on this year and been exploring it, exploring the strengths and areas for growth the first half of the year. And then we'll be providing additional professional learning the second half of the year to our, to our staff in that area. I'd also be remiss, while I have you today, to not mention anything about the Anna Reynolds building renovation. I'm sure you've heard lots about it as Newington residents over the years, but if you have not been on the board, you may not have heard a lot since the referendum a while, over a year ago. There's been a lot of work that's been going on behind the scenes with that. And so last year, KBA, the architects, met with a committee of students, parents, community members, teachers, to really develop a vision for the project leading into their work and their designs for it. So that initially took place last year. This year, we had the opportunity for staff to review the different layouts of different spaces, the grade-level classrooms, the media center, all the different areas of the building. So that's been taking place. And most recently, Dr. Brummett, myself and Lou have been working with the Newfield, the construction manager, KBA and Marnie on the phasing plan for the project and really finalizing those details for this impact on students and staff as the plan is taking place. So I know you'll hear lots more about the referendum, about the renovation and your time on the board, but I wanted to give you a brief update on that. And we are kind of set for construction to begin in June as soon as a school is out for the summer. And I'm now going to turn it over to Mrs. Lawrence, the principal at Chaffee Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Awesome. Thank you. So welcome back to all of our board members that are returning and welcome to all of the new members that are joining us. We are very excited to have you be a part of Newington Public Schools. And as you've heard before, we look forward to our, a successful partnership. I am just going to talk a little bit about, you heard my colleagues speak to the social and emotional aspect. You heard the academic aspect. And now I'm going to wrap this up again with going back to the social and emotional, as well as behavioral expect or aspect or expectations. And so I'm just going to show something that might look familiar to some of you. Are you able to see that? Where it mentions be the I in kind. And so this is something that we have as a poster. I do believe it was a gift that may have been shared with some of our board members last year. And this is something that is very important to us as Chaffee, as you're very familiar with our SOR cards and how we recognize students for, you know, expected behavior. Whereas this is something where we're really trying to think about that, that Portrait of a Graduate, when we think about the citizen. And, you know, thinking about others and respecting others for and understanding their diverse perspectives and also acting responsibly and ethically. And so when we think about that, we are looking at students who are displaying that appropriate behavior, where we are respecting others for who they are, we are being kind to others. And Dr. Brummett can speak today that the outstanding student of the month ceremony was all about students who were kind. You would have thought that we had all gotten together to write all of our essays about our students because they all had the same message. Every student was kind, not only to the adults, but to each other, very helpful, going over to their classmates and saying things like, are you okay? You can do this. Try your best. That is what we want to represent at all of our schools. But as I said before, it is a poster that exists at Chaffee. We do hope that when we get to the point that we have more visitors in our building, that we can also have some of the people that are represented here on the line, as well as some of our board members, when you have an opportunity to stop in and visit schools, that you too can find yourself being the I in kind and that you too can have your picture taken as we continue to recognize our students for just being kind to each other. We know that the past twenty months has been difficult for many reasons. Some of us have, you know, COVID has affected some of us in various ways and some of us just need someone to just be kind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lawrence. And I want to, before our administrators sign off for the evening, I promised them they didn't have to stay for the whole meeting. I want to thank them. The last year and a half has been, I'm at a loss for words in education. I know many of you on the table know exactly what I'm talking about as educators. This team has been nothing short of amazing. We rose to the occasion immediately with our technology, but equally important, all the protocols and practices that had to go in place overnight in all of our schools. And this team around the table here, as well as the virtual table, did everything they needed to do. And I'll tell you, their job is twenty-four seven. They are doing contact tracing after hours on weekends. I have conversations with them on the weekends and they're helping the nurses do that contact tracing to keep everyone safe. But equally important now is our recovery efforts and what we're doing to close our achievement gap and accelerate student learning. And they're all on board with that. And when I get to speak to my points later on in the evening, I'll get into some of those particulars, many of which were touched upon by this leadership team. So I want to thank them all. Enjoy the rest of your evening. We will dive into some more things with Attorney Mooney shortly. And thank you again for just giving the board an overview of what you are doing at your particular school or at the district level, depending on your position. So thank you so much. So let's see, we have a little time. We have a little bit of time before Attorney Mooney is going to join us and thank you all. I'm just going to start a few of my remarks and then I thought we'd just take a little break. Just so folks know the overview, Attorney Mooney will be joining us momentarily. If you didn't get my email, it was supposed to be Attorney Ritter, but she had unfortunately has become ill. But talk about a great substitute. We got the guy that wrote the book on school law, so that'll be outstanding. He's prepared remarks about, you know, all the important legal aspects of being a board member, do's and don'ts, things to avoid, things to think about, you know, the roles and responsibilities. So he will cover that with you momentarily. I thought I would just start to say a few words about what I would like to speak to you about. So let me see if I can get this. This was touched upon already by many of our speakers. But we have, we did our strategic planning last year. We skipped a year because of the pandemic, but last year in April, we met and completely revised our district vision and mission statement. And we really wanted to make sure it was clear to all of our stakeholders where we want to go as a district. So the vision sort of says, what is the long-term planning for? So the vision sort of says, what is the long-term planning for our students? We want all of our students to be contributing members of their community. And we did hear a lot about that today from our students who became students of the month. But also highly prepared for life after graduation. Life after graduation may entail college, career, military, whatever it is. We want them to be highly prepared and have a plan that they are very excited about. Our mission, how we plan on getting there, is to cultivate strong, ongoing partnerships of school, family, and community to ensure an equitable educational experience for all our students. And our educational community will support social and emotional growth of all students. NPS students will have a strong voice within their school community and graduate with a passion for their post-secondary plan and with the skills outlined on the portrait of a graduate. And what I included for you on this slide is all of the logos from each school. They all have their individual identity, but we all are collectively working toward that mission and vision. So we wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. The portrait of the graduate was discussed by many of our administrators tonight. But just so folks understand the progression, this has been going on for several years where our committee had been working on this and it was a representative committee from all of our schools to talk about, what do we want our kids to all leave with? And how do we get them there? And you've heard several administrators say, we want them to be excellent communicators, thinkers, and citizens. For every student pre-K to 12, we've broken this down into how we will go about that by level. Now, what we might expect of a preschooler relative to communication and what we expect of a 12th grader, you can imagine the span there. But nevertheless, we expect that our children will learn skills throughout their time with us. So each of those skills is broken down by level and all our assessments that we give the children throughout the school year feature how we're going to measure some of these skills. Some of it'll be quite evident. We've got, you know, by the time some of our kids leave us, they're superstar writers, they're clearly, you know, volunteer work, you know, all the things that students do that, you know, make them special. We want to see kids think on their feet. You'll, you'll hear throughout the school year kids who have voice in our district, and there are many, not just the Board of Ed representatives that you'll meet on a monthly basis, but all of our children. I've even got a group of first graders coming in, I believe in December, to tell you what their thinking is all about relative to their school. So I, I think we have to start those skills young and keep building upon them as the kids age up. Now, what drives our improvement plan for the district? Clearly, you've heard tonight from pretty much everybody, it's making sure that all of our students have equitable access. And when I get into the meat and potatoes of our strategic plan, you'll, you'll see what I mean. But first and foremost, we are a very diverse district. I'm going to give you some statistics about that momentarily. We are getting increasingly diverse. In fact, E. Green is now not a majority of white students. It's a majority of non-white students. And that is the, that is the trend in Newington Public Schools. So if we, we have to adjust to make sure all of our children, regardless of their race, regardless of their background, have equitable access to an educational program. And I wanted to take the time to point out the diagram too, because that highlights also, this is work on the buzzer, the special needs students. And how do we make sure that it's not just equity, but it's equitable? And that first diagram shows you, well, everyone, if everyone got the same, that really isn't going to help some of those kids depicted on the left-hand side of that chart. But if we look at the right-hand side of that chart, those students all get what they need to be successful. And that can vary. I'll, I'll tell you a quick story and then I'll give us a break before Attorney Mooney arrives. I was at a baseball game last spring and one of my old neighbors from Newington stopped by and he said to me, Maureen, what's all this equity or is it acuity? Is it equity? Is that really basically you're just watering down the curriculum so everyone just, you know, can all achieve it? I said, no, that's not at all what it means. It means that we are designing our curriculum so that we're meeting the needs of our stakeholders. Because if we don't, we're never going to close our achievement gap. And we, we have that commitment to our students. So I think what I will do is tell you about one student's story. These are stories that I talked about at strategic planning, but I, I would like to just repeat them a little bit again. We want all, these students are students of various backgrounds who have been very successful in Newington Public Schools. Jacob is a student from E. Green and he has Down syndrome. But in spite of that, he was able to do a report for his class about his, his experiences with Down syndrome. And it was a very touching story. And this is something that his teachers promoted. He got to talk about it. There is a Down syndrome day nationally. So he was able to be spotlighted on that day and talk about, you know, he's got a family, he loves different things like Shazam, I don't even know what those are, but he does. And Jurassic Park, I know, Jurassic world. He talked about what it means to have Down syndrome, about your chromosomes not being, there's a concern with your chromosomes which causes you to have some of the challenges that he has. And he's comparing his chromosomes to socks, so kids can understand it. He also went on to say that he, his extra chromosome makes it a little harder for him to move and talk, but he still loves to run and play and laugh. And he's got a very happy life. He does things like what other kids do at his age, swim, and just takes a little bit longer for him to do some of those things. And he also talks about his love of Disney. Let's see, there we got, this is E. Green. So now we know maybe where this all came from. And about the sports he enjoys. But, you know, at the end of the day, what, what this was meant to do was show the kids that even if you have some differences, you can still be a successful student in E. Green or in the district. And I, by the way, I've had permission from all the parents of this featured students that I can talk about this. But I will leave you at that. I'm going to give everyone a little bit of a break. And we do have some light refreshments here. We've got a cooler with some cold drinks. Help yourself. And I'm going to go make sure that Attorney Mooney isn't lost in the hallway somewhere because he was coming from another meeting. So a little bit of a break. A pleasure to introduce Attorney Tom Mooney. He works as a partner at Shipman &amp; Goodwin and he's worked with Newington Public Schools for quite some time, both for ongoing legal advice as well as negotiations. And in your packet are his handouts, they're in the packet. Totally in the packet in your, in your mail folder are some of the handouts he will be referring to. I can see he bought the book that he wrote and I'll let him talk to that. But as I mentioned earlier, he will be here to guide us through roles, responsibility of board members and some scenarios. And I will now turn the mic over to Attorney Mooney.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to see you. And if you wouldn't mind, will you, I'm Tom Mooney. And would you mind just saying hi?
Jessica Weaver.
Nice to meet you.
Evening, Richard LeBaron.
Nice to meet you.
Amy Cry.
Hello. Hello.
Dr. Bruce Swanger.
Bethany, you have a bag, hello.
Michael Barner.
Well, it's nice to, to meet everybody.
Anastasia, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's participating.
Oh, nice to meet you. So just to...
Would you rather use this microphone or...
However, however, I, I will, since I'm distant, I, I will project better, I think, without a mask. If, if it's, can you hear me remotely?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Good. No, they're saying I...
They can hear.
Just sing out if, if I'm not speaking loudly enough. But I'm speaking to a group far away, so I think it'll be good enough. But if it's not, I'm happy to hold the mic closer or, or speak louder. So in your packet, you have two documents. One is scenarios for discussion and the other is legal rights and responsibilities of board members. Just a brief introduction. As I, as Dr. Brummett said, I've had the privilege of working with the Newington Board of Education for about 20 years now. And I, it's a... I just want to thank all of you for the service to your community. This is a big job and some of you, who here is newly elected? Three, sort of, okay.
She's a returning.
It, it's a big job and over, you wouldn't know it to look at me, but I've been doing this for 45 years. So over those years, I've seen boards in operation and most of the time they're doing everything right, but sometimes they're not. And we start with the premise that you ran for the Board of Education and, and the salary you don't get and all the time you do spend because you want to serve your community. And in that respect though, sometimes board members are lured into activism that isn't really your job because you want to serve your community. So someone comes to you with a problem and it's like, well, how can I help? And, and so as we go through the scenarios, I just want to try and frame this so that you contribute to your community in the manner of board members and not otherwise. So let me just start with a question. Who here went to middle school? Okay, so that's great. You've all got that one right. So the reason I ask is in middle school, you learned about the three branches of government. And what are they? Legislative, executive, and judicial. So what are you as board members? I'm sorry, all of them or none of them? What do you think? What, what is your primary role as board members? Setting policy. And the analogy, of course, is to our legislative branch. What are the two things that the legislative branch does? The legislative branch passes laws and adopts a budget. Because the budget involves fundamental policy decisions in terms of allocating your resources. And so that's the legislative function and that is much of what you do. But you also, when do you serve in the executive function? When do you serve? Now, yes. Oh, so you're saying Dr. Brummett is the executive. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we manage Dr. Brummett.
Well, I'm not sure you're manager, but you do your best.
We are her, I guess, direct report in a way.
Yes, correct. But you correctly point out that Dr. Brummett is, as we stay with this analogy to the three branches of government, Dr. Brummett is the executive. And in fact, there's a statute in Connecticut that expressly states that the superintendent of schools is the chief executive officer of the Board of Education. So that's a delicate thing. What is, what is executive? What is operational and what is policy? And that's something that, that Boards of Ed just have to... And that's something that boards of ed just have to work through. But it's important to just start with the premise that the superintendent, her responsibility is to execute the policies that you all develop to regulate the affairs of the school district. But there's a third branch of government. Would you ever serve in a judicial capacity? Yes, Dr. Fudge?
In special cases, you would do that.
And what special cases would those be?
If it would be an issue with a person that may appeal to the board concerning their hiring or firing.
Correct. There are specific statutory responsibilities that we characterize as judicial for boards of education. And there are other situations where you are brought into situations where you're not serving a judicial function. And specifically, whenever you act as a judge, what is a fundamental quality of a good judge? Fairness, impartiality. And in fact, when you serve in a quasi-judicial responsibility, you're responsible for providing due process. And a key element of due process is to be fair, to be impartial, and to decide the case not on what you heard in newspapers, but upon the facts presented to you at that hearing. So you serve in a judicial capacity in specified circumstances under the statutes. Can you think of any? Yes?
Expulsions.
Expulsions. So there you are. And so let's just pause there for a second because it's kind of interesting. You're called in, you know, sadly, there was a food fight in the cafeteria in Newington High School. And you're called in. And your cousin, daughter, son has previously said to you, oh, my goodness, what a excitement in the cafeteria today. That Joe Blow was leading the charge, and he was throwing food at everybody. And so now you find yourself, you sit down, and you learn that you're being asked to consider whether to expel Joe Blow. Are you able, having heard that from someone else outside of the hearing, are you able to fulfill your judicial responsibility? Or do you now have a conflict of interest? I'm sorry?
I think that depends on you. Like, right, so if you know that you can be impartial and, you know, there's that thought of all, do you know that I have kids at the high school? So if my kid was the one who got pegged in the head with food, I probably can't be impartial. You know what I mean? So I think you have to be able to say, and I did when I was on the board last time, I excuse myself, but I need to know how I do my kids. So I think you need to look inside yourself and say, can you be impartial? If you ask me, say, no.
Well, it's almost like you've heard this talk before.
I may have to do my best.
Because... One of the phrases I always use when you're talking about conflict of interest is look inside yourself. Because you... And there are just certain circumstances where you're, no matter how fair you think you are, you can't really be impartial, at least as a legal matter. But in these situations, if you've heard something about it, it doesn't mean you can't fulfill your responsibility. You have to look inside yourself and decide, can I just put all that aside and focus on what I hear at the hearing? And decide that, make that decision on the evidence that I hear in the hearing. And so hearing about... And so then, what are the other circumstances? And expulsion is probably the most common. But school accommodations hearings are also fairly common. And again, you might have heard about some things. But if you... Let's go back to the expulsion. Okay, it's not that you heard about it, but rather, you walk in the room and you find out it's your babysitter or your babysitter's boyfriend. Could that cause you to say, well, I'm not the right person for this? And the answer is, again, you look inside. But typically, you know, if you have a personal relationship with someone, then you would say, no, I really shouldn't be doing this. And when you consider conflicts of interest in this quasi-judicial capacity, you also always want to consider not only the look inside piece, but the external view. And lawyers worry about not only conflicts of interest, but the appearance of a conflict of interest. So you would always want to make a decision in terms of what the public would think because the integrity and reputation of the Board of Education is very important to all of us. This is a real situation. A board member learned that the student being recommended for expulsion was the ex-boyfriend of her daughter who had unceremoniously dumped her. And so the board member said, okay, I know, I know. I can't be in on this. I can't be part of this tribunal. But at least can I come watch? Why do you think you're like thinking that's a bad idea? Do I correctly read the room? And not only is it a bad idea, but it's also a violation of law. Because as board members, you receive confidential student information when it's necessary for you to do your job. And so in this particular case, this board member was going to, under her request, would have been receiving confidential student information, which was completely unnecessary to do her job because she'd already determined she couldn't sit on that expulsion. So she... We have to be respectful of the confidentiality of student information you receive and another confidential information. You receive it in your role as a board member. But then your important responsibility is to protect that information and not talk about it further, no matter how juicy it is and no matter who the person you might be talking to is, like your spouse. It's your responsibility to maintain the integrity of confidential information. So that's just a little warm-up for our further discussion. But I hope it's clear that I'm here as a resource. You know, I want to answer your questions, want to make sure that this is a productive session. But I also want this to be a discussion among us and not just a lecture for me. And so that's why I, in working with boards of education, particularly in orientation sessions, came up with some scenarios that are fairly common that will illustrate some of the responsibilities that you have as board members. So and those remote, do you have access to the scenarios? The person's remote? Yeah, well, you do.
It was part of the packet that... I think she said, yeah, yeah, that's perfect.
Great, okay. Well, I'm going to just skim over the facts so we all are looking at it. So three members of the Board of Education urged that the mask mandate be lifted. And they write to the governor and the commissioner of education, quote, "as members of the Newington Board of Education," to make their case. Some of the other board members do not believe that students should have to wear masks at school. These board members hear about this letter and are outraged that the three board members did not let them know about the letter in advance. Did these three board members do anything wrong? I see some head nodding. What was wrong in what they did?
No individual represents the whole board, not even three.
They can write the letter. They just seem as if they are from the Board of Education.
So they can write the letter?
Of course they can, because as parents, you're allowed to... Like, you're still allowed to have an opinion, but you should...
Right. So is it the group consensus that they can write the letter, but they should not have identified themselves as members of the Newington Board of Education? That cuts both ways, doesn't it? Because when you are indeed as an individual, of course, as an individual, how much power do you have as board members when you're walking around town?
None.
Okay, we got that straight. Right. And so these three board members don't have any power either. But is it relevant to the reader that they sit on the Newington Board of Ed? So it's a tough thing. But what you typically see in the newspaper is some sort of statement. This, "we are not speaking on behalf of..." And to the extent that they did anything wrong by not saying that clearly and by leaving the potential inference that they were speaking for the board, then they were acting. That was something they could have done better. But what about the idea that, you know, because some of these outraged board members agreed, and they were just frustrated and disappointed that they weren't told that in advance about this letter. So should the three writers have told the other board members, just so you know, we're writing this letter, you want to sign on? Is that okay?
In an ideal scenario, they would go to the chair and have that conversation first to say, this is our concern. And maybe the board chair could bring it up with the entire body. That would be in my opinion, the ideal situation.
Okay, but they didn't.
So then, I don't know if the matter is like, should the three board members be upset? I mean, they're going to be upset that a letter was written from the New... That appears to be from the Newington Board of Education.
Yeah. What if they were very clear that we're just three members? We're not speaking for the board, but we think that the mask mandate should be lifted? Is there an expectation among your board members that your fellow board members wouldn't do something like that without talking to you first?
A board-by-board basis, I guess.
I'm sorry?
Is that like a board-by-board basis? Like, how respectful are you around the board members?
So you're saying that it's not a legal requirement? And I can agree, it's not illegal.
I mean, more to track like the ethics versus legal.
So actually, there is a legal issue embedded in this little scenario.
Is it caucus, like?
Well, a caucus is a...
Because I don't think this board is...
Right, right. And just to say specifically, a caucus...
I think it was a party that I know. It's not a legal game.
Oh, no, it's not. But so could members of the Board of Education who happen to be members of the same political party who happened to compose a quorum of the board, could they talk about this letter without posting it under the Freedom of Information law?
Not if they were a quorum and discussing board business.
The Freedom of Information law defines, and we're going to talk about email and meetings a little bit with some of these materials, but the Freedom of Information law defines a meeting as the assembly of a quorum of multi-member public agency to discuss or act upon matters within the board's jurisdiction. That's where we start, but it's not where we end. And by the way, a public agency includes committees created by a public agency. So all of the curriculum committee... Do you have a curriculum committee? The curriculum committee is a public agency. Its meetings have to be posted. But there's... Do you have a personnel committee?
Yeah.
Well, when boards of education participate by committee in a collective bargaining, that's excluded from the definition of meeting. There are certain things that are not meetings under the law. One is strategy or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining. Another is a chance or social gathering. If you all go to a retirement dinner, that's not a meeting of the board. It's a chance or social gathering with a big caveat. And it is, you can't be at the bar talking about board business or even in the parking lot, talking about board business as a quorum because then you're an assembly of a quorum discussing board business. But there are many circumstances where board members, a quorum, may be in the same place at the same time. But it's excluded from the definition of meeting because it's a chance or social gathering. There's still a long way around the barn to get to your caucus, I think, because another exclusion from the definition of a public meeting is a caucus. And a caucus is a gathering of members of a single political party. Now, if you're in the minority, and I don't know what the constellation here is, but if you're in the minority, you can always talk. If you're not a quorum, the meeting issue is irrelevant. But if a quorum is composed of members, if a gathering of members of a single political party also compose a quorum, then that would be a meeting but for the fact that the Freedom of Information law excludes caucus from the definition of meeting. Yes, Dr. Fudge?
When you say quorum, are you talking about a two-thirds majority or a simple majority?
I believe here, and it would be in your bylaws, and if you follow Robert's rules, it would be a majority, a simple majority composes a quorum. So in order for you to do business, I believe, you need five board members present. And so let's just say, is there a political party that has five members? So when that political party gathers just as a political party to talk about their position in caucus, then that's not a meeting of the Board of Education. But there's a... The caution there is that the Freedom of Information Commission is very rigorous in enforcing the law in favor of public awareness. So if a quorum of a public agency meets and invites another party, like the superintendent, like the Democratic town chairman or whatever, then you lose the caucus exemption for meeting. A caucus under the Freedom of Information law in Connecticut has to be limited to the members of the same political party who are members of the same public agency. And as soon as other persons are included, then you're no longer in that same party. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to like make sure I have a clear understanding. So if there was an email correspondence between five members of the same party, that would be majority? And that, and it included another individual that is eligible? Might I say?
Yes, no, you've posed an interesting variation on the theme because now we're on email.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to...
No, 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 you're doing great. In fact, one of the important things I want to talk to you about is email and when you get in trouble, when you hit reply off. And in fact, I just happen to have, and you do too, this second document where... Because we can jump around, and I'll make sure that we... I'll do my best to say they cover everything. But on the second document, you see legal rights and responsibilities. The second, that was the third page, is you see a memo from me to you, caution on board member communication by email. When the Freedom of Information law was passed in 1975, the definition of meeting was included. And here it is all these years later, and it's still there. And a meeting is in the middle of the page. You see, "meeting means any hearing or other proceeding with a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum of a multi-member public agency, and any communication via or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic communication, to discuss or act upon a matter over which the agency has supervision." Included in that definition is a very important thing. Sometimes board members get together on email or whatever, and then the defense is, we didn't make any decisions. We didn't take action. And that, under Freedom of Information, is completely irrelevant. As soon as a quorum is discussing board business, then unless you fall within one of those exceptions, it's a... it's a, um, a public meeting and in violation of the law because it hasn't been posted and the public hasn't been permitted, uh, uh, to attend. Uh, and, uh, so when we see by means of electronic equipment, in 1975, what was that?
Uh...
Speaker phones. That's it. Um, the email, can you imagine? You know, uh, I can, 'cause I lived, I was alive in 1975. Uh, and, um, uh, so, but it's morphed to now, uh, a common problem for public agencies is when they communicate, uh, by email. And there, it's really a two-headed problem. The first is, and back to your question, caucus. So now, and I might as well be concrete, uh, yeah, I, the, is it five or six of one party? And what party is that? Republican.
You're going to five?
Five Republicans can come, can be a quorum as you communicate. So now, in your specific question, those, the five Republicans are talking, and so it's not a meeting because they're, the, the discussion is a caucus discussion. It's like, you know, the equivalent of being physically present at the same time. And then your question, well, what if, uh, we have a sixth or seventh person on that email? Do we lose the caucus exemption? And the answer is yes, you lose the caucus exemption. But there's a, a larger issue, and that is that, um, when, when, when you communicate by email, you are creating public records in every circumstance. So even though this communication is among five board members, and under the meeting rules, it would not be a meeting that has to be posted. That Republican communication, even if it's just limited to the five, is, is now there for everyone to read. There's no confidentiality associated with public records and caucuses or political parties. And, um, so every email that you create or receive that relates to the, um, business of the, uh, Newington, uh, Public Schools is a public record. And, and, um, people are just regularly embarrassed, um, when someone... In fact, um, I, I have to say that from my perspective, the, um, Freedom of Information Act has been weaponized by people who wanna cause trouble. Um, they say, "Okay, I want every email, uh, written by among board members in this three-month period pertaining to whatever." But they don't even have to say pertaining to. Uh, it just cre, it, it, it can be a, a significant burden to try and gather the information. Um, who here thinks it's a good idea, uh, to, um, uh, communicate on your private, uh, email? Okay, I'm seeing that no one's gonna accept my, um, invitation there. Uh, and, and rightfully so, um, because, um, well, how many public agencies are there in this room right now? How many public agencies? At least ten. Because each of you is a public official or a public agency, so your records are public records if they pertain to the business of the Board of Education. So each of you is a superintendent's public agency, and the, the board is a public agency. So why it's, you're correct in saying you don't want to do your board business on, uh, your personal email. It doesn't matter from a Freedom of Information, Information standpoint. The beginning of this, um, document defines a public record as any recorded data relating to the conduct of the public's business, prepared, owned, used, received, or retained by a public agency. So any emails that you have, where, whether, whether it's on, uh, your, um, uh, personal computer, uh, district-issued computer, doesn't matter. Um, those are, are public records, uh, so you have to always think about, "How is this gonna read when it's published in the Hartford Current?" Because it could be. And, uh, so you just can't be too careful about the, what you write, because it's always gonna be public. And, and so what if you receive an email from a friend? "I just want you to know that I think that you should, um, support the budget." But this is just between us. Can you keep it between you and that friend? You're back to, you're a public official and you've received it. The definition of a public record is recorded data received or retained, uh, prepared, owned, used, received, or retained. So you have to educate your friends that when they write to you about board business, uh, they are creating public records. Now, um, sometimes they write to you about board business that is privileged, like they're concerned about their child. That's, the fact that they wrote to you is public, but all the personally identifiable student information, uh, can be redacted. But back to the main event here about, uh, why you don't want to do board business on your personal email. When, uh, someone is upset and makes an FLY request, I'm quite confident none of you receive a salary for doing your work. And so why should you assume an additional burden to be responding to FLY requests? But if you retain, uh, doc, uh, records related to your board business personally and not on the district server, you have the concomitant responsibility to, like, search your own records. Uh, but when you operate off the district server, then, "Maureen, I got this FLY request," and then there are, um, established procedures. Again, this was written over forty years ago. But now we, what's evolved is, um, we search not by reading a million emails, but we search on terms in email. So your IT department will take care of these FLY requests, uh, by doing that work for you, but they can only do that if you do it on, if you're maintaining those records on the district server. Does anyone ever, uh, we're gonna get to the scenarios, but this is like a stream of consciousness there, if you don't mind. Uh, anyone, uh, ever texted a board meeting? You know, this is not, true confessions. At a board meeting, and I'm not asking for you to raise it again.
Yeah, my wife or my dad said, yeah, hundred percent, I know where you're going.
Yeah. Right, so, um, uh, when you text at a board meeting, is the text that you create subject to public disclosure?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm gonna have to, uh, offer the all-purpose legal answer to all questions, which is, it depends. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. You mentioned you might, your wife might, "Are you still there?" Uh, and, and...
A hundred percent.
Right. And, um, or, "Would you please pick up, uh, a gallon of milk on the way home?" That does not relate to the business of the Newington Public Schools, so that is not a public record. What if a member of, in the audience, a person in the audience texts a board member during a meeting, "I don't like the way this is going, I hope you're gonna speak up." Is that a public record?
Yes.
Can you think of any other reason why that violates the Freedom of Information law? Let me give you an analogy. Um, in Brooklyn, uh, not Brookfield, Connecticut, there was a really interesting, um, FLY decision. And, uh, it was the zoning board. And they, uh, were called before the Freedom of Information Commission. And, um, examination, they admitted, "Yes, we were whispering. We were whispering so that the public couldn't hear us." And that...
Like at their meeting.
Like at their meeting.
Right. And, and, and that was a violation, right? Because what's a public meeting? You're giving that public access to a meeting. "We were whispering," and so that was a violation of the law. But you see the close analogy, texting is depriving the public of knowing what's going on. And the worst of the worst is two board members texting each other about board business during a meeting. That is functionally whispering, so you can't do that. But, but you also have to be careful about texts, um, more generally. I don't wanna overstate it, so that if it's strictly a personal thing, uh, that's fine. Everyone understands that. But, uh, any texts, um, uh, that relate to the Newington Public Schools at a board meeting or not at a board meeting. Um, I, I was working with, um, some people at the State Department of Education a couple of years ago, and they were lamenting that someone had FLY'd their text between this, uh, um, official and the Commissioner of Education. And those texts were all subject to public disclosure. So you have to, now that you've assumed this responsibility or are continuing, uh, to, uh, fulfill this responsibility, you have to be careful. So, um, let me, uh, circle back, but I do very much appreciate the questions, so keep them coming. Um, but, but to finish off this scenario, the three board members, um, might have clarified that they weren't writing on behalf of the Newington Board of Ed, but conferring with other board members is fraught with peril because at this point, you're having, uh, a discussion among a quorum, uh, of the board. And, um, it's very clear when you reply all. And, uh, the commission tried to figure out, like, "Well, when is it a meeting?" And it's a meeting when it's a discussion, so when is it a discussion? And, um, I managed, I know it's hard to believe, but I lost a case of Freedom of Information Commission on behalf of a, a school board. And in that case, it was three. Statement, response, statement. That was a discussion. This, the commission, uh, back about, uh, oh, I'm on the wrong document. Uh, back, and I think it was, uh, uh, ten, uh, twenty years ago, uh, they tried to, um, issue a declaratory ruling about where along the road is it, when it becomes a discussion, and you can't be doing that on email. And they gave up after forty, three years of effort, and there is no guidance. And they decide these cases on a case-by-case basis, but the case I lost, it was a boom, boom, boom. That was a discussion. And in fact, you know, I'm not without my arguments. Um, I said, "Well, it wasn't really a discussion among the board members. It was just a discussion between two board members, and the others were just watching." You find that persuasive?
No.
No? Well, they didn't either. So, so as soon as you're on reply all, you're just invited. So what can you do? Maureen sends something out. And by the way, when Maureen sends out the board packet electronically or information electronically, perfectly fine. Efficient. Because it's not a discussion. So if you have a question about what Maureen sent up, perfectly appropriate to pick up the phone or even by email, say, "Could you clarify?" Perfectly fine. The danger comes when you reply all, and even ask the question in front of the other board members, because Maureen then possibly replies all, and now you're into a discussion. Uh, and that's what the commission has been vigilant about. And, and people who aren't supportive, uh, that's where they find opportunity to file complaints that they're gonna win. And, uh, so the last, uh, question here, uh, scenario one, is can the board chairperson write such letters on behalf of the board? Could the board chair say, "We think that the, uh, mask mandate should be lifted on behalf of the board"?
Do you have a question with the board first?
You, you raised the appropriate question. Have you talked about it as a board? Because the chairperson speaks on behalf of the board, the chairperson doesn't purport to speak for the board without the board speaking. Uh, and, um, so when the board has acted, the chairperson would typically respond to inquiries about the board's action. But as you point out, there's not at all evidence that the board has weighed in on this. So, uh, in my humble opinion, it would be a, um, uh, it would go beyond the, the scope of the spokesperson role to decide the board's position and then communicate it.
So it's not just like a can't or should situation, I mean, I'm just saying like...
On that one...
Dr. Fletcher could do that. Shouldn't he know?
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate the question.
I'm not sure if they, like, any kind of...
Yeah, there's, like, best practice.
Right.
And there's what you really shouldn't do. Uh, and this is more than best practice. Um, I, I, in my opinion, it would be a violation of the, the bylaws because it's purported to do more than be the spokesperson for the board. It's speaking on behalf of the board. So, so I think it's, I very much appreciate the question because a lot of what I talk about is best practice, and some of it's legal. And in this case, I think it's more legal than just, uh, best practice. Uh, so how about, uh, scenario two? Yesterday, the Hartford Current published a front-page story about a teacher employed by the Newington Public Schools who was arrested for running a meth rant. The article identifies the teacher by name and school. Parents from that school come to the next board meeting, there are public comments. Several of them address the board to express concern that this teacher must be fired immediately. A fourth parent comes up to speak, attacks the board for sitting there like bumps on a log, uh, which was, my mother used to, okay? Uh, and asks the board members what they're gonna do about this bad teacher. Should the board members, that would be you, sit there like bumps on a log? And now you're, seem rather sure of your answer.
Well, yeah, because the chances of that coming across our, our table again, right? It's a kind of disciplinary policy committee thing. We have to, it's not, that's not our job, that's her job. You know, we're not in charge of...
And in fact, you could, uh, trip up...
Our teachers, sorry about my teacher mode, that's putting children's...
Right. Well, you could trip up on your quasi-judicial responsibilities if you're making comments. Um, but the, the converse is also true. Remember, we talked about, well, what if you heard about the food fight? Well, at public comment, you could hear about things on which you later have to make a decision. It could be courting on state bus stop. It could be a teacher should be fired. Just hearing about it doesn't mean you can't be impartial. But as soon as you start talking about it, it's a problem. Yes?
Is public participation ever limited to only agenda items? Or could a, a member of the public approach the table?
Yes.
Um, and just kind of express some, um, dislike or, or grievance?
Uh-huh.
Or does it have to be, do they have, do their comments have to pertain to the agenda?
Uh, it's, that's entirely a decision for this board to make as you, uh, consider the matter, and, uh, I suspect there's no such limitation in your bylaws now. Some boards, um, uh, some boards have a bylaw that says, "At the beginning of the meeting, we're gonna have public comment on agenda items." Because it makes sense that if people are concerned about that, would be, they don't want that at the end of the meeting after the board's already delivered. Um, and then they come back at the end of the meeting with a more general, uh, public comment, uh, opportunity. But that's entirely up to you, because in fact, there's no legal duty to have public comment at all. You, you decide, and every board in Connecticut, uh, from my experience, every board has public comment because you do care about the public. Some do specifically limit public comment to agenda items. There, this is where sometimes you, even when it's not so limited, it's only fair to infer that any comment offered by a member of the public would have to relate to the business of the Newington Public Schools. So if someone comes to a board meeting and starts talking about the Texas border, you would say that's out of order because, uh, and that would be implicit. But some boards have explicitly said that the, you know, the, uh, public comment at this point in the meeting is, um, uh, limited to agenda items. Uh, when you, as it create, or as you have created, an opportunity for public comment, uh, you are now triggering constitutional issues, right? And that is that, um, uh, you can regulate people's commentary and public comment in terms, and this is just First Amendment law, time, manner, place. So you can say you can talk for two minutes, you can say you can talk for ten minutes. That's a time. Places, this is... Places, this is when you can do it. You can't stand up later and offer public comment. It's a board meetings are meetings in public, they're not public meetings, you know? So, but you set aside this opportunity for the public, and you want to hear from the public. And you set it up. An interesting thing that's come up lately with the remote thing is, some boards, and you may be one of them, say, could you state your name and address? And that's very common. And, you know, we're in a kind of a contentious period right now. And I've heard of situations where someone says, "Last time I gave my address, I got vandalized. I don't want to give my address." And so if that ever becomes an issue, I mean, you just, you decide what you want to do. But one way to handle it would be that your requirement is that people announce their name and address, or that as they sign up for public comment, they give their name and address. And then if people are, anyone wants the information, they can get it. But that's different from just requiring that people publicly state their address. But that's a policy judgment for all of you. And a common thing we say is that if it isn't broken, don't fix it. So I'm not suggesting that you have a problem that you need to address, but it has come up in some districts. So now you can regulate time, manner, place, and manner of speech. Is you, if a person says, "You guys are stupid", that he's out of order, because he or she is out of order, because that's a personal attack. But if a person comes and says, "I think you're permitting that field trip was a bad idea, and this is why", that's perfectly right, because what, in First Amendment law, it's called viewpoint discrimination. You can't decide what perspectives, as long as people are saying, acting in a civil manner, staying within the time limit. You can't decide what people say. Years ago, a lot of boards had what I would call happy-talk policies, where they have a policy saying you can only, you cannot criticize members of the Knutnik Public Schools. And if you want to say in creating the form, "We're not going to talk about personnel", that's okay. Viewpoint discrimination is when you like it when they say nice things, and you don't like it when they don't, when they say negative things. That's viewpoint discrimination. So you create the form, and I'm not aware of any school district that said, "We're not going to talk about personnel", because that would just be so, I mean, you could do it, but it would be burdensome, and you'd be constantly policing, you know, is this a personnel matter or not? So those are some just comments on public comment. Yes?
One of the things that we've done in the last two years, and something on the board, is we let the public know that we don't respond to their comments or their questions. We get back to them later, so we don't, as a board, respond to them.
So they shouldn't be surprised when you sit there and don't respond. And that's excellent, that you would want them to know. And you may already do this, some boards put right on their agenda that public comment is welcome, limited to three minutes, and should be civil. You know, just, and so if there's ever a question, you can just point to that on the agenda. So what can the superintendent, you've read it in the paper either before or after you talked to the superintendent, what can the superintendent tell you about this teacher who is arrested for running a meth rant? I'm here, I'm seeing some,
If you're under investigation, this will be, you know, by whoever, and these will be the proceedings.
Can the superintendent say that teacher is on administrative leave? Sure.
Yeah, I know.
Because it doesn't go to the merits. It's just this procedural status.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Right, so that's perfectly appropriate. But sometimes board members are frustrated, because it's a serious situation, and you want to know about it. And this is back to where I started, which is, you're here because you want to serve the community. And so it's not like you're criticizing anyone for being curious. It's a very, it's deeply concerning if a teacher is involved in running a meth rant. And, but the superintendent is protecting you when she says, "This school is safe, person's on administrative leave, we're investigating, and so I really can't say anything more." And so that's really in your interest that you, but you're going to hear about it. And so now you're the supermarket, and you're recognized as a member of the Board of Education. Someone comes up, "What are you going to do about that?" And what can you say?
It's not a right to argue.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
That's what you should say, and can say. And in fact, part of this, part of this is educating the public, right?
Yeah.
They think, they think you're all big deals. You're on the Board of Education, so they come to you with a problem. You're going to, you're going to be able to fix it. And so sometimes we just have to help members of the public understand, no, I'm one of nine people, I have no authority outside of a board meetings, and that's an operational concern that's vested in the superintendent. And some people are going to give you a hard time. They're going to think you should be, well, what, you know? And it's just a matter of trying your best to convince them, and then just let, you know, they're going to think what they think. But you, it's imperative that you're just not getting involved in discussions about personnel matters. And it's very hard, and I recognize that it's hard, because people are going to want to engage you. I have never given this talk without saying what the worst thing that happened to me in my years of representing school boards was on this topic. The issue was whether the high school principal should be non-renewed in that particular town. And the high school principal, at the time, had a right to a hearing. And he invited 400 of his closest friends to the high school auditorium for the non-renewal hearing. And the first thing that his lawyer did was call board members to the stand to determine whether they were impartial. And in front of 400 people. Isn't it true, board member Jones, that you talked to Sally at the Stop &amp; Shop, and you said, "You're going to get rid of my clients"? Does that sound possible? That a board member would have an opinion about whether the high school principal should stay or go? Yes, you, of course you have an opinion, but you can't share that opinion if you're going to be called upon to decide that person's fate. And in fact, this is back to the conflict of interest situation. You have to ask yourself, like, maybe you had a run-in, and you hate the guy's guts. Or this guy helped your kid get into college, you know? I don't want to always be negative, it could be either way, and you have to look inside, right? To decide whether you can put all that aside and decide the matter on the evidence presented at the hearing. But these board members, in fact, there were three of them that were called to the stand, who had to admit that they were in the community talking about the case. And so, you know, what did we do? As they say on TV, "We settled." We didn't, we didn't have any ability to go forward, it was totally compromised. So word to the wise, let my suffering be your guide. So scenario three. The Policy Committee has been updating certain policies and deleting others. The policy on public complaints has received a lot of public attention, because some members of the public are concerned that the board may eliminate the policy and thus deprive them of their forum for complaining to the board. Given the public attention, some board members who are not on the Policy Committee want to attend the meeting of the Policy Committee, at which the public complaint policy will be discussed. Is it a problem if a quorum of the full Board of Education attends a meeting at the Policy Committee?
No.
Is that a problem? That was a quick one, you say that with such certainty. What's your reasoning?
Because they're part of the board, it's not in the executive session. They can sit in and listen, they may not be able to participate, but they can listen.
So their attendance is permissible? But what do you mean about maybe they can't participate?
They can participate as a member of the public. Well, there's a couple of comments, but they cannot participate as a member of that committee.
Right, you're exactly right. And in fact, this is one of the few circumstances in school law where the arrangement of the furniture matters. I was speaking to one board about this, and, you know, I asked the question, in all innocence, they said, "They're board members, they sit up at the table, what, you know, what's your problem?" And what happens then, of course, is that the meeting morphs from a meeting of the Policy Committee to a meeting of the Board of Education, which is unposted and thus in violation of the Freedom of Information Law. So you're absolutely right, those members have every right to attend, but the Policy Committee still has to run this meeting, and you can't have the other board members be treated any differently than any other member of the public. Now, Policy, I'm sorry, any committee meeting, Policy Committee or whatever, you may have an informal process, and a couple of people are there, and you let them talk, and that's perfectly fine. But, and conversely, if you run your policy, your committee meeting is in a formal way, and people from the public can watch, but they can't talk, well, then that's the rule for the other members of the board. Interestingly, in Connecticut, we so often have to make our best guess as to what the law is. But in this case, there's an explicit provision in the Freedom of Information Act saying that when a quorum of one public agency attends a meeting of another public agency, it's not considered a meeting of the first public agency, implicitly, automatically. So, for example, if you go to a meeting of the Board of Finance, and a quorum of you, they're talking about your budget, you don't have to post that, you may, but you don't have to post that as a board meeting, because it's supposed to be the Board of Finance. And it's not, you're not there doing your Board of Ed responsibilities. So this scenario is interesting, but there's, as you reflected in your answer, we see direct statutory authority for, is perfectly appropriate as long as those other board members don't purport to participate as board members. Scenario four, and again, not looking to, you know, if this isn't an issue, then it isn't an issue, but just to talk about it briefly. Some board members are more engaged than others, and they ask the superintendent for a lot of information. Once the superintendent responds to one board member's request for information, other board members hear about it and want the same information for themselves. Some board members are dissatisfied with the occasional delays in receiving information from the superintendent, and they complain to others over email, and even sometimes reach out to staff for information before the superintendent responds. What, so is that a problem? Okay, what do you, as a board, think is the appropriate protocol if a board member asks for information?
With the superintendent to get it, and whatever kind of papers.
And what would your, if you're not the person asking for the information, is it any of your business?
So I have a question along those lines. Because before you guys had a question. So in my previous stint, I would ask the superintendent questions that I wanted to know. And he'd be like, "Yeah, ask this question." And I'm like, "Dude, like, is that, like, is that what he's supposed to do?" Is that what it's going to be?
Well, let me work, help you work through that, Maureen.
Absolutely, I'm going to do for what I'm going to regulate, if I understand. And I'm, I'm an advocate of that.
That is the protocol that I recommend. And, you know, I don't know if there was implicit, like, oh, yeah, here's the implicit judgment, but there shouldn't be. The information that you think is necessary should be provided to you, but if you think that information is necessary, the recommend, this is best practice as opposed to the law. The best practice is the superintendent sends that information to everybody.
She does.
So that you all have the same information. Just speaking personally, on more than one occasion, I've been sitting innocently in my office at five or 5:30, and the phone rings, and it's a member of the Board of Education that I work with. And the board member says, "I just have a question." And they ask me this question. And I just know I'm being played, because what's going to happen is they're going to get to the board meeting and wait for the appropriate time, and they're going to say, "Well, I talked to the lawyer, and he says..." And so I have to do quite a tap dance not to get pinned down, because it's just not fair. And in fact, when I write opinions, I typically say, "Recently, you requested advice concerning, specifically you asked", because how you ask the question profoundly affects the answer that you get. So when this board member tries to pick me off, "We can't do that, can we?", is a lot different from, "How do we do that?" And, you know, I'm in the service business, so I want to be helpful. So it's very important that there be a clear path for information, and that everyone understands the question being asked, and receives the answer on an equal footing for everyone to that question. And that's the way, fairly, to operate. So I don't think it was any person,
And I made a little personal judgment. It doesn't matter.
Well, now that we know that, well, and what about reaching out to staff members when the superintendent's a little slow? Right, you're all saying the right thing. I heard big no-no, and I would have to say that really is. You supervise one person, that's the superintendent. Now, as with any description of how things should work, there are exceptions. And I see Lou's here, and I don't know if Lou has to, but what if the chairman of the Finance Committee, do you have a finance committee? If it's understood that there's going to be discussion between your chief financial officer and the chair of the Finance Committee in preparation for a meeting, that's not a violation of protocol. It's these one-off things where you just, but, so I don't want to be overly rigid, but unless there's a clearly understood practice where certain board members receive certain information and then share that information with the other board members typically on a committee, it may be, for example, the Policy Committee would have worked with an assistant superintendent on a particular policy. Perfectly fine. But the general rule is that you have any request of staff members, you go to their boss. And that's the superintendent, and the superintendent will work with that staff member to get you the information that you are looking for. Any other questions or comments on information protocols? Okay. You're doing great, you're getting these all right so far, but there are two left, so we'll see. As a board member, you hear a lot from parents and others in the community. A parent has been a reliable source in the past, and he tells you that a teacher at Newington High School was reported to have been using sexual innuendo in class. You check in with the superintendent, who tells you that she's dealt with the situation. A week later, the parent contacts you and says, "Hey, that guy's still teaching." Is he, is he still saying inappropriate things in class? Now, how do you reconcile the conflicting information? Superintendent has said she's dealt with it, yet this guy's still teaching?
When you direct that, you cut off yourself and put that to me, it's like,
To me, it's like, if they are wondering about us, especially.
So it's not your job.
I can direct you to the superintendent.
Right, and, and in fact, that, the information in this hypothetical isn't necessarily conflicting. Every wrong thing somebody does doesn't result in a termination.
Correct.
Um, um, and uh, so uh, you appropriately say, well, you know, I have no further comment.
Yeah.
You know, if you have a question uh, about this teacher, I suggest you direct that question to the superintendent. Um, so how much investigating of this should you do on your own?
Nope. Yeah, it said in here that um, uh, contacted the other, you contacted the other board members to see, I can't find it. You say like, you contacted them, see if they got any, so my concern was.
Oh, that's the next scenario. I think someone was reading ahead.
Oh, oops, nevermind, yeah. But anyways, I was just gonna say, I wouldn't talk to any other board members about it, I would just send it right.
Right.
So you would just say, this is a personal matter, um, if you have any concerns.
That's, that's exactly right, you just, and, and again, you're struggling, some board members anyway, with your desire to be helpful.
Right.
Uh, and then it's a legitimate concern. Uh, what if you hear something even more serious? Um, do you have a responsibility to, uh, as a mandated reporter to report that to DCF?
That's a tricky question.
I, I, I live for tricky questions.
And I'd say yes.
Yeah, because you're not the first party, unless you hear it directly from the source, you can come into first.
Well, isn't that what you're talking about though?
Uh, well, actually, um, the, the scenario wasn't specific. A student could complain to you that a teacher was coming on and then that's direct. Or, or the student could have complained or a teacher complained to you, that's indirect. But the trick in the question is none of you are mandated reporters.
Why? Or we are not in our board capacity.
In your board capacity, thank you for clarifying. Uh, Maureen, anyone, you know, you, so those of you who are mandated reporters know that you have that responsibility as you perform your job responsibilities. I know you're thinking about that.
I am, only because that's not what we have been, like, that, at least on the DCF training that I have been told.
Uh huh.
And read and listened to millions of times and like, there, every year for two hours, it's really exciting. Um, it's just like, you're already a reporter, so if you, like, if I, like, if I was in the field and I see something and I don't do something, that's a great, my sort of speech.
So you're at um, uh, Home Depot.
Uh huh.
On a Sunday and you're just trying to live your life. And you walk by and there's this parent who's like really aggressive with her child. And she
You don't know me too well, you're like, isn't that?
And, and loses it and pushes the kid to the ground. You're a mandated reporter, but you weren't doing your, your job. Now, is there a problem in reporting? Absolutely not.
Right.
Uh, anyone can report and I leave to your individual conscience when you think that's appropriate. Um, but my understanding of, of
I think you're missing it because if it ever happens, you're gonna defend these.
Uh, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, so your mandated reporting obligations exist in a context of your professional responsibility and the list is long. And I raise this issue, um, uh, not to discourage anyone from reporting, um, but because it's come up a lot, um, there were, um, there were, uh, this now goes back about five years. Uh, but there was quite a public um, uh, situation in Hartford where uh, the Office of the Child Advocate accused uh, the Hartford Public Schools of suppressing DCF reports. And it was a big magilla and uh, we figured it out and this and that. But interestingly, one of the details uh, in the OCA report was that board members had received information. And um, the, e-everyone agreed that those board members um, were um, not mandated reporters. And so that was the least of the problems. There were some problems, but that wasn't one of them. Now, you've added the complication of some board members are mandated reporters uh, because of your professional, uh, because of your jobs. And even there, it's my understanding that um, it doesn't trigger because you're not acting in that capacity. My wife was a teacher for many years, um, and uh, the Home Depot thing is not a complete hypothetical. Um, uh, you know, in, in her best teacher voice, uh, she would like tell people what's what.
Your wife and I like doesn't talk with you.
And if she talked about Hartford.
Me too.
Yeah, I know, it countered. Yeah, so anyway, um, and, and how detailed the information, now, this is um, uh, an interesting variation on the theme. Um, sometimes the superintendent deals with a very controversial situation. But as I said, you know, every controversial situation does not mean a person loses his or her career. And when people accept responsibility for the mistake and, you know, you, you are, this is now heavy uh, hangs ahead, wears the crown, this is the superintendent's responsibility to make those calls. Some superintendents, yeah, you know, superintendents have to say, I need to do something. Does this person need to lose his or her job or is there another uh, solution? But, but um, so we talked about your quasi judicial responsibility. Superintendent can't, uh, in fact, in very rare circumstances of actually ask the teacher to counsel to waive the due process issues because this is so hot, we need to talk about it as a board. And um, most often they waive it, the board hears from the superintendent and thinks through uh, the situation. Sometimes they say, no, you can't. And then the superintendent assesses to do what he or she feels is appropriate. But the subtlety here is that that quasi judicial responsibility ends at a certain point. And if the super, if it's a controversial situation, it's resolved, the person is still working, can the board ask for a debrief? And the answer is yes. The superintendent, once the decision not to terminate has been made, so as not to trigger your judicial responsibilities, the superintendent has the right to um, debrief with the board and talk about the considerations that went in and here's the solution. And um, uh, you know, uh, obviously you have to let the superintendent do her job and you can't be micromanaging. But in the rare circumstance where you have legitimate questions, so it might in, involve even a, a policy uh, decision for the board that is permissible, but as uh, so often, there's a wrinkle. And the wrinkle is that discussion you want to have in executive session. And whenever you talk about a person in executive session, he or she has the right to require the discussion to be held in public. Now, I've never had a person in that situation say, oh no, you're gonna talk about me because it's been resolved, so they're gonna be perfectly happy not to have it um, be um, presented again in a public forum. Uh, but that's just, uh, so superintendent has to protect you. But you have, you might wish to better understand the considerations that went into a particular decision and that's a, that's perfectly acceptable as long as any discussion of a person uh, be, and in fact, interestingly, if it's not a discussion of a person, then I'd be hard pressed to squeeze it into an executive session. Um, you know, but uh, when, so typically we notify the person and then there'd be a debrief and uh, um, you go on from there. Uh, the last scenario uh, is uh, you run into a, an acquaintance at Trader Joe's and she complains that her son's fourth grade teacher has not returned homework to her students in two months. After reviewing board policies, you determine there is no board policy on whether and when teachers must return homework to students. You check with the other board members on whether they've received similar complaints about this teacher and may have not. Do you share this information with the superintendent? We've already decided, you're not gonna say, let me handle this, alright? This person has a complaint. So you're not gonna handle it, but do you share this with the superintendent?
I say yes.
There's a, there's one yes?
You can or could not, I mean, it depends and also I would ask, do you wanna keep this? I mean, I've tried to request that, uh, that we kept confidential and they're inquiring about a board specific policy or is it like, is this an administrative policy? Is this a school specific policy?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'd say like, I can ask the superintendent on the recap, let's say I've gotten a request on this now. Um, you could say it that way or, you know, you can direct them, again, cut yourself out and just direct them.
Yeah, you're typically, one of the things that people will benefit from understanding through your uh, teaching them is there's a chain of command.
Right.
And have you talked to the teacher, have you talked to the principal and like that? It isn't a board responsibility. Um, but the reason for the scenario and the question is to just try, I, I agree with you that in this particular case, I would think a board member would wanna tell the superintendent and the superintendent would wanna know because um, you serve an important function as like the ear to the community. And the superintendent gets plenty of information, but you may get information that's important that the superintendent hasn't received. Uh, you're correct, it depends, you don't want every little uh, complaint isn't gonna, you're not gonna wanna burden the superintendent with it, but, so it does depend. But where a teacher is allegedly not doing his or her job or doing his or her job in an inappropriate way, perfectly appropriate to share that with the superintendent and um, tell the person, well, this isn't my job, but I've shared your concern with the superintendent, if you have any further questions, you follow up through the chain of command. Um, uh, like that, so now, what can she tell you, you know, that, you know, it, it, that it depends. But if, if this teacher is in a disciplinary um, path, uh, then the superintendent's gonna wanna protect you. Uh, and we've talked about um, when and how you should report back. I did wanna draw one distinction, um, and fortunately, um, you're not a district that is um, burdened with a lot of grievances. You, you know, it's a, a co-op collaborative uh, relationship that you have with your teachers, administrators and other employees. But sometimes it's possible you'd be, you could be called into a grievance hearing. And um, at that grievance hearing, it's gonna look a lot like uh, some sort of hearing, because there, um, but you're gonna have the board sitting there, you're gonna have the superintendent sitting there, you're gonna have the union sitting there. Uh, after the grievance is presented, can you be privately with the superintendent? Yes, you can.
Maybe.
Because collective bargaining is not an issue of due process. Collective bargaining is collective bargaining and you and the superintendent are on the same team. And sometimes issues that come up in grievance uh, could be just as important as something we might spend an hour arguing about in collective bargaining. It could be an issue that even might go to arbitration. So the superintendent on a grievance has the right to communicate with you as to why she made the decision and what other considerations. Because if the board uh, just hears, um, and the example I kind of used, they filed a grievance that they were denied personal leave when they wanted to go on a field trip with their kid on a school day. And, you know, in isolation, you might say, that's a little harsh, I mean, you know, teachers are parents too and, you know, why can't they do that? And I'm not even presupposing the right answer, but to frame the discussion, I just wanted to share with you, in that circumstance, the superintendent might say privately to you, if you grant, you override my decision and grant that grievance, this is what I anticipate as a consequence. Because decisions you make in collective bargaining, whether it's a grievance or otherwise, set precedent and they're binding. And so now, everybody who wants to go on a field trip with their child would say, well, and in fact, you may have heard some of you with the content of past practice, you know, you threw your grievance decision, establish the practice and this is how you're gonna handle those situations. I'm not saying there's a, what the right answer is to this or any other, but you, there, there is a right answer for Newington in that situation and it's perfectly appropriate for the board to talk with the superintendent privately after a grievance hearing, uh, but before a decision. So that's an exception to the normal rules of impartiality that I, I hope you never have to bother with because you won't have the grievance come to you. Uh, but, but that's just a clarification. Now, I know I've um, been um, speaking uh, with you for um, going on uh, an hour and a half and so I, I don't wanna overstay my welcome, that's one of my uh, important commitments. But I, I would just like to throw it open to questions you might have uh, using um, the outline um, to, on the first document about your authorities. I think we've touched upon most of this stuff. Uh, FOI is a particular concern. Um, but I don't know, maybe I anticipated all your questions and you'd like to see me leave now. But um, uh, I do wanna just uh, give you, this is a opportunity, first shot at the lawyer and I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have. Yes?
Social media.
Yes.
Are there any statutes against that? I mean, to be on social media and present yourself as a member of the board of education, are there ramifications to that?
Well, that's an interesting quiz. Um, uh, I feel a lot of work about social media as to whether some stupid thing someone posted, is they're right under the First Amendment or is it, can it have consequences in an employment situation? You raise a somewhat different question. And that is, um, uh, someone is misrepresenting on social media. And um, uh, I'm not um, uh, familiar enough with the criminal statute. You know, at what point this would be a criminal matter of impersonation or fraud? Uh, but if a person is just posting nonsense on social media and not, you know, achieving a fraudulent purpose uh, and it, it's not a crime, um, I forget which justice, um, uh, in court, I think it was Grand Ice, but I'm not sure. Um, the, the, the old size, the, um, uh, no, I think he said the son might be disentended. So, but someone else said, um, uh, the remedy to speech is more speech. So if someone is misrepresenting, it's perfectly appropriate for there to be more speech. I don't know that you have the levers to actually prevent that. You could complain, you know, I'm a real concern frankly, I don't wanna get political with uh, our social media persons making decisions as to what can and cannot be posted that causes a major concern under the First Amendment. But if, if someone is out and out this, uh, misrepresenting, um, I'm sure that there are complaint procedures with the, the, whether it's uh, uh, I don't know if I'll ever say meta and I'm gonna say Facebook.
It's powered by Meta.
Oh, is that, is it still Facebook, but it's powered, oh, okay, well, that's a comfort. So I, uh, uh, so if, you know, where the post is, um, if there's a moderator and someone's being dishonest, then certainly that's appropriate for, for a complaint. But typically it would be more speech, not, you can't say that. Other questions? Well, um, I know uh, it is uh, unexpected that I would have this privilege tonight, uh, but it's my pleasure, uh, as I mentioned, um, you work closely with a desiderer who I adore and um, but I've also worked with the Newington Board for some twenty years or so and so it's a real pleasure to get to see all of you and congratulate the new board members and, um, we're a rock to you, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Chris. So, um, I did wanna say, because I care so deeply about the Newington Board, um, I, I wrote a book uh, twenty years ago, it's in its ninth edition, it's a private Connecticut school law. If anyone, as a courtesy, would like a copy of this, I'd just let Maureen know and I'd be happy to, as a courtesy, uh, to provide that to you. I find that if you put it on your nightstand, um, and I find that if you put it on your nightstand and wake up and have trouble sleeping, you can just open it up to any page and you'll be back asleep in five minutes.
I love it. I would love it. Just that you wouldn't be knocking at your desk.
Thank you very much, Attorney Mooney, and appreciate your joining us this evening when Attorney Ritter could not, and as usual, you did a fantastic job. Much appreciated.
My pleasure.
And I will absolutely take book orders from the board.
Terrific.
Do I hear a couple already? All right. I'll send out an email to more, so I capture everybody.
Well, have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We won't reply.
Thank you. And no reply, I'll know. You've, you've learned. Would the board like a quick break? I just need about 20 more minutes of your time, but a little bathroom break, stretch break? All right, looks like people need to do that. Let's do that, is that okay?
She described her school experience as in the United States much more rigorous and challenging than in Brazil. And when we had to go on remote learning during the middle of all this, that was really hard on her because she was a visual learner. She describes herself as a visual learner. But when she started seventh grade in the hybrid model, it was very hard for her to just come to school three, three days a week. So we did make accommodations for both students with disabilities as well as students with ML concerns to come in every day, or four days a week rather, because of their specific needs. And once that happened, a light bulb went on for her and she just took off like a shot and became the superstar learner and getting good grades was a priority. And again, she rose to the level of an outstanding student of the month when she was in grade seven. I don't know exactly which month it is. I don't have it in my write-up here, but it was just such a huge victory for her to have the struggles up front and then with the supports that she got and her own grit and determination to go from that to being an outstanding student of the month. So showing spotlighting a student that did very well with ML challenges. And last but not least, this is Alex. He graduated last year. And he is a student that comes to us from Hartford. And he wrote to Ms. Tigno at toward the end of his high school career that, "I want to thank you for making my four years at Newington High amazing. I am truly thankful to have the opportunity to come from Hartford and be a part of such a positive environment that pushed me to be the best student possible. I know I would not be, or I knew I would not be receiving the offers I have gotten today without you and the entire school staff at Newington providing me with the support and resources to maximize my potential." So what he's showing you there are all the college acceptance letters, which include UConn, Rensselaer, and others. He did very, very well, a top student, and he really benefited from the environment we provided. So why do I share all this with you? Because I want that for all of our kids. We have a lot of kids that do well. Danielle's around the table here. Her students do very, very well. We want that for all of our kids.
That's only because mom's really mean.
No, we have other board members whose students do very well too. We want that for all of our children, but I wanted especially our newer board members to realize how complex our student population is now. You look back to seventy eight, okay, maybe I was at Newington High during that time. 1.6% of our kids were special ed. Now fifteen and a half. Five oh four, we go from zero to 5.7%. These are significant changes. EL, I should have changed that, is now ML. We didn't really even measure how many ML kids we got back in the late seventies. Now we're at 7.1%. And so on and so forth. Free reduced lunch, we didn't measure that back in the seventies. Now more than 30% of our kids qualify. Open choice started back in seventy-eight, now are quadrupled or more. And magnet schools, the reason I bring up magnet schools is folks don't realize, maybe many of you do because many of you are school affiliated folks, we are responsible fiscally for those kids. So while they're not sitting in a Newington school, we are writing checks to a variety of magnet schools and they are still considered part of our fiscal responsibility. And if they are special education, then there's even more costs involved. That's a half million dollar outlay every year. And I wanted folks to see our very significant ML population that grows every year. Now, these statistics are from last year. When I do my budget presentation in January and February, you'll probably see these numbers grow. But look at those high percentages, E. Green, Patterson, all in the 14 to 15% range of students whose primary language is not English. And it goes up every year. Every year it goes up, even from, I'm just at the bottom with the totals. We were at 246 last year, now we're 276. And I guarantee you it'll be higher when I share that updated numbers with you coming with our board presentations for the budget. So significant. Now here's where the work needs to be done. As you heard tonight from Steve Farisi, we are really trying hard to have our teacher population be at least more closely aligned with our student population. So our student population is about 56% white, but our teacher population is 96% white. That is fairly typical in Connecticut with some exceptions. But we really would like to see some diversity because I, we've seen from students, they've said it to us. I would like to see some of these teachers look more like me. And you can see from our Asian, our Hispanic, and our black population. Now, this chart does not add up to 100 because we didn't count kids who are multiple cultural backgrounds. But clearly, we've got some work to do in making our population of teachers more diverse. Similarly, we have work to do on our test scores. Now, these test scores are two years old because there was, last year's test scores were very impacted by the pandemic everywhere. The year before, there was no test score. So we're going back two years. But you can see that we do well, our white students do well. We do well in the aggregate when you compare us to the state. But when you break it down by different ethnic backgrounds, you can see those students do less well. And we're very committed to that changing. Yes, thank you very much, Jessica. Yes, the last category, that greenish color SWD is students with disabilities. Also, we want to see more of our population involved in the AP courses. We are getting there. We are seeing that uptick, but that still isn't quite where it needs to be. Because our students who make up more of our population don't always make up the same number of the population in our AP courses. They're more likely however, to be more in an intervention course. So that's kind of that converse relationship. One thing that we've seen some nice gains on, and I think you've heard from the principals tonight with our ruler protocols, our SEL, our discipline rates are going down. I didn't include last year's discipline rates because they were really good when their kids weren't here that much. But this really represents a three-year trajectory where the kids are, we're seeing less disaggregation among kids with disabilities getting disciplined, Hispanic and black students. We still have some work to do, but those rates are going down and that inequity is going down. So I wanted to just, what I really wanted to hit home with the board tonight is that our continuous improvement plan, which is in your packet, is a living and breathing document. It's not just something we sketch out once a year, put it on the shelf and make it all look pretty. It really is something that we refer to and update. So I will be updating you on our progress throughout the year. We did recently go into our plan and update our goals. And I wanted to share that with the board. Of course, this is gonna happen. So we have our focus areas and priorities. Many of our administrators tonight spoke to that. And these were updated when we had our strategic planning back in April. I guess this doesn't want to cooperate. So that is our vision of the graduate, which we talked about a little bit earlier. Okay, there we go. Slow but steady. I don't want to advance my apologies. All right. I wanted to share with you our district goal to reduce the achievement gap for historically marginalized students and underrepresented students. That typically is your students with racial diversity or special needs. And we want to make sure everyone has access to a high-quality curriculum that is rigorous, relevant, and engaging. We also have a theory of action that, when I say we, it's my entire team, where we, well, our big lift, our big bet this year is if we focus on our PLCs, and that's a professional learning community, as many of our principals talked about that tonight, that really dig in deep to our data, looking at kids who are doing well than kids who are not doing well. If they're doing well, let's accelerate them. If they're not doing well, what are we going to do strategically to bring their learning to where it should be? And as we, we are working at this throughout the school year, we visit PLCs, myself, all the administrators, and we, they're a focus for all of us this year to make sure they're functioning at very high levels. And they meet at least weekly at all of our schools. So we ask our teachers to spend time at all PLC meetings talking about the four big questions. What do we want our kids to learn? What are we going to do if they don't learn it? What are we going to do if they learn it and need to be accelerated? How do we go about doing those things? And what data will we use to kind of measure that? So let me know if you have any questions while I'm scrolling through this stubborn, here we go. So this is where I want the board to see that these are living and breathing documents. We spent some time not too long ago looking at our goals. And we actually updated them. Some of them are already met only in November. For example, I don't know why this is hopping around, but we have a instructional core Google site. We, we learned through experiences with teachers that we provide a lot of training, but they don't always access it right away. And then when they need it, they need to have a little refresher. So we've created this Google instructional site where they can click on there, go to a website, and look at all the training they've had over the years to find those strategies when they actually need them in real time. So that goal is met. We set that and now they have it. And in fact, a colleague from West Hartford, who's one of my interns this year, shared West Hartford's site, and that was one of the things that we looked at as we were developing our own. We meet with the school departments to talk about PLCs all the time. This Thursday, we will be at Martin Kellogg as a team, a district team, looking at their PLCs in real time and giving them feedback on how they're doing. We develop professional learning for our teachers to make sure they're understanding how to do progress monitoring, which essentially is one of the Childs in an Intervention Program. How are you making sure they're making gains? We already have met the goal of teaching staff to appropriately disaggregate the data. And what that means is, are they really looking at all of our subgroups when they look at student data to make sure that we're considering everyone's needs? Because when we look at our data in the aggregate, we look good. But when we pull it apart, there's not, not everyone is doing well. Okay. We are auditing our IAPs to make sure that there's, everything is written very well for parents with students with disabilities. So we call that in progress, though we have completed the middle school. We are also looking at what we need to do from IAP implementation and training and making sure our curriculum has a universal design for learning. We are conducting an audit at NHS about our SRBI practices to make sure that they're as good as our other schools. For those of you that don't know, that means scientifically research-based interventions. And while we feel we're very robust K-8, we think our high school SRBI could be better. And we have also finalized our performance, or in the process of finalizing our performance indicators for all subjects grades five through 12, and that relates to our mastery-based learning efforts. And we are continuing, while our Portrait of the Graduate is done, we now are aligning it to all of our assessments to make sure when we look at how our students are progressing, do our assessments give us that information about are their communication skills, their thinking skills, their citizen skills? We already talked about Portrait of the Graduate. We are also monitoring our grading and retake practices to make sure those are fairly done district-wide, especially at the high school. We are now working on the grade five standard-based report card. Okay. Providing professional learning to all staff on standard-based report cards for the grade five. We're going to do that once the grade five report card is created. Making sure things are aligned under number seven to the Portrait of a Graduate that has been met. We've already done that. And last but not least, we are very much in the throes of identifying the needs of our building level work and making sure that, and you'll hear from me at budget time, what do we need for funding to support that work at the building level? And that's why I want the board to know that whatever we talk about at budget time will be directly aligned to the strategic plan, and we're not going to pull things out of left field. You will see the alignment to this plan. We want to make sure that we're continuing our work on social emotional learning. As you heard from many principals tonight, that's in progress and pretty close to completion at some schools. Others are still in the learning process. We also are in the process of training our teachers and administrators on culturally responsive teaching practices. And you met our diversity and equity specialist this evening, and he is a big support, you know, works hard, and that's a big part of his job. And we also are going to form a committee of parent and community members to get additional perspectives on our equity work. So I'll be talking to the board about that when we're ready to launch, to see if any board members would like to be involved. And again, we continue to work on our culturally responsive practices and also linguistically responsible practices. I, board members may or might not know this, but I send all of my school messenger messages out in six languages. And that reflects the top six languages, English being number one, Portuguese, Spanish, Polish, Vietnamese, and I think that's it. Did I miss one? Portuguese, Spanish, Vietnamese, English. Malalam, but that's number like seven or eight. And that one Power School does not have translating yet. But we are going to migrate to a different system next year that will have even higher levels of translation power for those more, less frequent skilled or less frequent incidence languages. And then I think Jay touched upon, I'm sorry, this is the equity audit. So one of the things that Gerald's working on this year is an equity audit. What are we doing well in our district relative to equity and what are we still needing to grow and improve upon? And that includes training and coaching for administrators, looking at our curriculum. He's doing book studies with folks. So those all relate to the equity work. We've also done a lot with cognitive coaching for our administrators so that they do have very proactive and positive conversations with teachers and how to kind of help them improve their practice. That, that goal's been met. We're also obviously looking at ways to refine and improve our surveys. So we send out parent surveys at least once a year. And we're going to get, do better job of making those more accessible, translate them into different languages, and you know, really make our, our entire community feel welcome. And then the PLCs, you'll probably hear a lot about that this year through some of the presentations about the work we're doing with PLCs and why we believe that's a high lever for student and learning improvement. So those are the big quick overviews of what we're doing as a district. You will hear more about that from our administrative team when they present throughout the year on what that looks like at their particular school. And then I just wanted to do one more review, just so the board knows where we were at last year. Here's the goals that we set for, for the last two years and how did we do at the end of last year with these goals. Expanding preschool programming to all, to at least one classroom per every elementary school, that goal's been met. Continuing to expand our social emotional learning practices, that's ongoing, but certainly we're right along what we want to be doing. Continuing to implement and expand the mastery-based learning practices, we're also continuing that, but we met our goals for last year. Supporting the collaboration and coherence at our middle and high school academies. We've been doing a lot of that, especially with broadcasting recently, where that was sort of a drop-off. You'd have these rich broadcasting courses at the middle level, and they come to the high school, you didn't have it, now they do. We're doing that with our medical academies as well, our engineering academies, continuing to make those as robust as possible. Ensuring all of our courses are in place for graduation, that's done. And here's where the work really still needs to be done, and that's all students having equitable access to an educational experience that will prepare them for careers of the future. Here are my proposed goals for the board. No need to vote on them this evening. Obviously, it's not on the agenda to vote on it anyway, but I wanted to give you a sneak preview of what we're looking at for this year. And then at some point, we would, I would appreciate that being an agenda item for board consideration. So again, I, the goal always is around student learning. How do we address unfinished learning through instructional practices? Many of our students did, as mentioned earlier this evening, struggle through the pandemic and have some unfinished learning. How do we make sure all of our students get that equitable access so they all have outcomes like you saw on our student examples tonight? Mastery-based learning practices are still going to be in our goal area. Providing training for administrators and staff regarding culturally responsive and social emotional learning practices. Strengthening partnerships with families and communities to support our goals. And developing high-functioning PLCs. For those that weren't on the board last year, I spent some time talking to the board about all the research behind. When you have a high-functioning PLC that talks about good teaching practices, it trickles down into higher student learning. That's our, that's our bet. That's what I'm hoping, and I believe will happen with our, our district as we continue that work. So before you all nod off and go to sleep, because it's getting late and maybe you didn't even have dinner yet, does anyone have any questions? Yes, of course.
The, the surveys, what is the usual like response percentage that, that you get from parent-student surveys?
We get about 50%, but when we've disaggregated the data, we are, it's underrepresenting some of our subgroups. And we are going to, we are looking at strategies of how to improve that, which would include translation and then promoting them more than we have in the past. So good return rate, but not, not, not all of our subgroups.
As far as those goals go, is there any looking at continuing the preschool program? Because I know that was a big focus and it seems to have like kind of dropped off.
We, we did expand another classroom this year at Patterson. But right now, because of the pandemic, we're, our enrollment looks just about right for the classes that we currently have. So we're not adding another classroom next year, but we are going to still expand. That is still in our goal. It's just not in the goal for this year because the, the, right now, we have room in our current classroom. So adding doesn't make sense at this time. I do think though, it's because of the pandemic. Some parents are a little hesitant to send the little ones to school during a pandemic. All right. Well, thank you for your attention. I know it's been a long night. I will turn the meeting back over to Chairman Fletcher.
Okay, so on the agenda, we have remarks by the board members. So we will take a moment, if anyone does want to make a final remark before we take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Weaver.
I just want to say thank you to everyone. I know they're not here, but maybe they'll watch it someday. But it's really important for us, but also the public to know kind of what our role as the board is and who is who in the district and who does what. It's always an education, I think, even for us who return, because we learn they do even more than we thought they did. So it's really appreciated. Thank you for the information. Thank you to our lawyer for getting that. I think it's always good to have clarity and much more time doing this. It's helpful for us as, as board members to move forward with this. So I just appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just really quickly, I, I want to say that I'm just so happy to see all the social emotional work continuing. Because though, it seems as though we are perhaps climbing out of the pandemic. We are, we are still in it, and I, I think that kids are still emotionally disrupted from the past year and a half. So I'm really happy to see that it's not just academically that we're supporting them, but supporting their social emotions as they go forward. So I just was very impressed by all that work.
Okay. We also need to include public participation. If anyone in the public wants to participate, you can call 860-665-8659. Or if you are here in the Zoom chat, raise your hand. I cannot see it, but I believe that Ms. Craig can. So in the meantime, while we're waiting for any public participation, are there any other board members that want to make comments? Okay, well, I will say thank you all so very much, everybody that participated via Zoom or through a phone. All of you that came out here tonight was very informative. And I get more education tonight. So I'm appreciative of all of this that is going on. I'm looking forward to working together with each and every one of you. And we have a lot of work ahead of us, so we need to prepare ourselves. And I will remind you, the next formal board meeting that we have is December the 15th. I don't know of any committee meetings yet, but you will be notified if there are. So please make sure you pay attention to your emails, especially the ones in your school account. Because that's where you will be informed of different things and information will be passed on to you there. And I just want to encourage everybody to be very careful about texting and emailing so that we don't break any laws. Okay, so we all need to be very cautious about that. But there were no people in the public that want to participate, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is made. Is it seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.